Two on buttons are pushed.
We're good? Okay. Welcome, everybody. We'll start with the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Roll call.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Quigg.
Present.
Commissioner Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Feng.
Yes.
And Chair Davis.
Here. Agenda review. Any changes? Questions?
Through the chair. I don't have any questions, but I think if they're -- it might be good for people who are for the other projects to just be aware if they're here for that. Were they notified that -- yes? That it might be later?
You know, yeah, we had reached out to all the project applicants after the Sarah Station to let them know that we did have a substantial agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Then minutes. We have two sets to review. February 4. Any questions? Changes?
I'm sorry, this is maybe -- oh. I was gonna say just -- I don't know if it's just me, but both sets were very difficult to read, and I know that in the past we've talked about it being an action -- action record, a record of action, and then maybe having some important points in there, and I feel like that would be a better way to go, just because this reads a little bit like a shorthand transcript, and it makes it difficult to just kind of go through it. And that's -- I mean, that might be just me, but I actually rely on the minutes a lot when we're going back to a project that we've been -- haven't seen in many months. I think everybody else is the same, but where we go back to it and try to remember what the major points were, and it's really difficult. It was for me. If -- I'm not sure if the other commissioners are -- feel the same.
Is it just a style thing that we should improve for later, or are these minutes inadequate and we should bring them back again?
Personally, I would prefer to bring them back, but I'll go with what -- I mean, I couldn't even re -- I had a hard time going through it, because I have so much we're going through, to even know if they're accurate. I'm hoping that they are. Maybe the other commissioners are fine.
Anyone else?
Is there anything specific that you want the staff to make changes on? How, if any, aspects of the minutes? I mean, I understand that it -- and I saw what you said about how it may sound like as you go through it, like a shorthanded sort of a transcript thing, but...
Nothing specific. So, nothing specific, but again, it's just -- nothing specific, no.
And through the chair. So, I know that we had some comments about the minutes format in our previous meeting, and I was waiting to kind of -- and the council was kind of going through a similar thing, so I wanted to try to have some consistency, and I think we have landed on what the format is for council, so what I can do is go back -- if you want to, I can go back and see if these are matching up with that format. If they're not, we can revise it and put it back into that format where it's more action-oriented than sort of verbatim sort of comments. Of course, we always have the recorded video as well, if that's the commission's desire. I can do that.
If I may. I think action minutes are fine, as long as for certain things that are very important when it comes to a specific finding that we noted for specific projects, such as the wireless approval that we did some time ago. Some of the projects, we also gave conditional use permits on front yard encroachments. Those are the things that we should probably make some emphasis on the findings that we made in order for those approval to go through. Those would be important, whereas the others, you know, discussion, we don't have to record it on the minutes, word by word, exactly what we said over the mic, but just action minutes will be fine.
Okay. And that's understood, and we actually, just real quick, we are making amendments to the minutes that -- for the seven -- I think the 797 Margarita, the wireless facility, we are making some amended minutes on that, so I understand what you're saying.
Is it agreeable among the board with what I just said earlier?
I'm fine with action minutes. Now that we're on TV every time, we always have the backup on there, so there's no reason for immense amounts of details, just key ones.
And I would -- that's exactly what I was talking about as well, just the action and key comments that were made, so, you know, things like "thank you for a great presentation" is not really needed in here, whereas something like a finding or -- and definitely if somebody has a -- if there's a dissenting vote, I feel like that is actually important to know why they -- why someone would have voted, you know, in dissension, and I think that's important to keep out there.
There's always that fine line with the action minutes, and then there's always something that needs further clarification, so it's kind of a combination type minute that is ideal, so perhaps what is coming forward now will be that combination.
So, do we want to see these again?
I sense that the majority would probably like to have it redone.
I think it's okay for the minute to be the way it is. I mean, it may not read very well, but it captures the essence of the meeting, which is the purpose of these minutes. I'm okay with it as it stands, although further improvement can be made. I don't have a major problem with it. Personally, I'm okay with it, but I'll let other commissioners speak about it.
As long as these aren't missing anything. They may have a little too much detail, but if they're not missing anything significant, then we'll let these go, perhaps, and then the next time we'll have a different style to look at?
Yeah. I think it's more of a verbiage thing in here, rather than just -- rather than the content was insufficient.
I'm okay with them also, and hopefully we can come up with a -- I did see one little item here on number eight.
On February 4?
Yeah. We're -- it's quoting Chair Davis, and it said "closed," and I think we should add public comment.
All right, I think just in terms of the planning commissioners, I don't think we would be expecting each one of us to provide comprehensive review. You know, we're here to each, you know, provide the review from our perspective and make sure it meets, satisfies our perspectives. So, I look at some of the things that I was concerned about, and then just making sure that they're included or addressed in that, but I can understand Commissioner Joe's point of view, that need to be complete, but not sure if it's our responsibility to do that, because we have five sets of eyes, and then the staff has several sets of eyes also.
So, is there a motion on February 4? Oh, can you turn the --
The board is not responding.
No, there you go. That's okay.
Did he make a motion?
He's trying.
I'm trying. Promise.
There it is. Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes on February 4, 2019.
Is there a second? Meeting.
A second.
Vote.
Sorry.
Passes 5-0. March 4. Questions? Changes? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Thank you.
A second.
Okay. I'm just -- sorry, I beat you to it. Do we feel like voting now? Votes?
I wasn't here. I did watch the meeting, but I wasn't here, so I'm just abstaining.
All right, passes four with one abstention. Four yes, one abstention. Okay. Minutes done. Public communication, the time set aside for anyone who'd like to speak on a topic that's in the purview of the Planning Commission but not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything? Any speaker slips down there for general public communication? Nope? Okay. Then we'll close that part. Old business, we have none. Public hearing, A, is Millbrae-Sarah Station project. It's being continued from March 11, and I'll give you the introduction here. It's the Planning Commission Review of Design Review Permit and Master Sign Program Applications to Consider Design Aspects of the Millbrae-Sarah Station Transit-Oriented Development Project pursuant to Millbrae Municipal Code 10.05.2500-C. The applicant, Millbrae-Sarah Station LLC, obtained approval of a development agreement to develop a 3.6-acre mixed-use TOD project in three buildings located on the west side of the Millbrae Intermodal Station, east of El Camino Real, consisting of number one, Building R1, 10-story building with 119 apartments, 4,255 square feet of ground floor retail space, and 3,648 square feet of retail or live workspace. Number two is Building R2, 10-story residential building containing 325 apartments and 4,340 square feet of retail or live workspace. And number three is Building C1, a nine-story building with 290,140 square feet of office space, a 5,000-square-foot Galleria and lobby, and 22,360 square feet of retail space. Okay?
Before we go on.
Yeah.
So, for A and both -- public hearing, A and B, do they get considered together, or do they -- how would that -- I suppose you cannot do one without the other.
Right, so they are separate actions as listed on the agenda. My presentation has been combined, so we'll -- I'll go through the continuation of the design review permit and then get right into the specific plan as they're related to one another. But eventually, there'll need to be an action recommendation on both cases.
Separate.
And I would suggest you take comment on both, so you don't have to do it -- go through it twice.
Okay. Do them combine.
People are free to comment on either aspect.
So, should I introduce B then, right now, as well?
Sure.
All right. And item B is the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan Amendment. The specific plan amendment to approve amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. The proposed amendment would revise Figure 5-3 on page 5.12 of the MSASP. The revision would remove the designation of transition to single-family neighborhoods as denoted on Figure 5-3, located on the north side of proposed California Drive between El Camino Real and the Bark Caltrain railway tracks. Okay? So, and now or later? Okay.
I know staff's ready with their staff report. I do want to take one -- take care of one piece of business. I know last time when we met, I mentioned that because of the nature of this proceeding, we need to have you disclose any ex parte contacts you have had with developer opponents or others with an interest in the matter. Just noting that design review is a administrative, or as we say in the legal profession, quasi-adjudicative matter, where you're basically applying facts, the facts about the project, to the certain rules. Those are in the Millbrae Municipal Code as well as the Station Area Specific Plan. As a result, it's important that all information that you gathered on this matter is reflected in what happens in the hearing room, and therefore, just ask you to please declare any meetings, conversations you've had with the developer or opponents of the project. I don't think you have to go to extensive lengths, but a general statement of who you met with and what was -- what the subject matter was would be helpful. Thank you.
Start down there.
So, I have not had any communications with the developer, other than greeting Mr. Moosie in the hallway over here, and have not had any conversations with any organized groups opposed or in favor, ever.
I had met with Mr. Moosie probably three years ago. We kind of talked about it. My husband was there, and I had introduced him to a friend who wanted to get additional information on it, so we had had coffee.
I don't recall any meetings at all with the developers, any formal projects I've run into, one of their attorneys, Janine Fogarty, over time. We might have mentioned the project, but I don't remember any serious conversations. Same with the Decodies. I run into them all the time, but no big meetings or anything like that.
I've never had any formal meeting with the applicant or his representatives in regards to the TOD-1. I have met with Mr. Decoding on different occasions in other public meeting places, and brief descriptions of the project has been discussed. Also, the general public have met me in many different public places, such as supermarkets and coffee shops and whatnot, and they mostly just inquire about the project, and I give them facts about the project that I know about from this meeting room, but that's about it.
And I would say the same. I've had just informal neighbors coming up and asking me stuff, but no formal conversations with anyone, either the developer or any parties opposed or for the project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, we are here this evening to discuss the continuation of the design review permit for Millbrae-Sarah Station. So, again, my name is Brad Meisner. I'm the Community Development Director, and if you'll recall from our conversation last Monday, we had gone through a number of components of the proposed design, so I'm gonna go over some of the previous slides I had rather quickly, and then talk a little bit about some of the comments that we heard, what's been done to date. So, just quickly, again, design review is what is before you this evening under the zoning code of the Millbrae Zone Code. This is a discretionary reviewed application. You have the ability to make findings a fact, to look at this application. We need to make sure that it meets those findings and that it's consistent with the Millbrae Area Specific Plan as well as the design guidelines. Planning Commission and Council both have the purview to review the architectural application in relation to the architecture, building, massing, colors, materials, signage, landscaping. You have many options available to you. You could approve the project with the findings and conditions within the resolution. You are able to approve the project if you wanted to add any additional conditions for any concerns. You could always -- the commission could always continue the project if you thought there was need for additional design considerations, and last but not least, if you felt that you were not able to support the project, then you would have the ability to deny the project if you're able to make those findings a fact. We spoke in some length last Monday about the site plan. Again, this is primarily a site that has three buildings, C1, which is primarily an office and retail building, 10 stories, R2 and R1 are mixed-use and residential buildings. This is an overview of the proposed development. You can see some of the form and mass, and you can see the relationship between it, the Intermodal Station, and SFO off in the distance. This is a little bit more of a close-in, aerial perspective that shows a little more detailing of just sort of the form and mass of the project. We had considerable conversation last week about the corner design at El Camino Real and California Extension, and this was the previous design that we had seen through the study sessions, the applicant, because of a number of factors, namely wanting the building to look more residential in nature, the comments from both Planning Commission and Council about trying to relate more harmoniously to the neighborhood, using a softer color palette, making the building look more residential. This was the revised design. We talked at the last meeting about how the previous design had the signage along that fin, and that it seemed to be lost in this newest design, so we have some -- the applicant has a new proposal of where that signage would be, and we'll go through that this evening. We talked a lot about the massing. We talked a lot about the color palette facing the hemlock neighborhood. the color palette facing the Hemlock neighborhood. And then we talked just generally about the residential buildings, leading up to the conversation about the office building, its colors and materials. And then we talked about how the Galleria might function adjacent to the Intermodal Station. We spent some time talking about the interface between the proposed project and the Hemlock neighborhood. And as I explained at the last hearing, we do have the provision that's within the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan that requires this 45-degree angle when projects are adjacent to single-family zoned residential neighborhoods. In the Hemlock neighborhood, as you can see from the drawing, what we actually have is the dotted line represents the entirety of the neighborhood with it being split zoned in this red triangle, sorry, triangle. That's not a triangle at all. That's a rectangle. In the red, in the red rectangle, actually, these properties are zoned commercial. So, for the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, the transition in 45-degree angle standard does not apply in this adjacency, only here. This is a better image here that kind of shows, at the top of the slide, you can see the yellow area, which is existing single-family zone, and that's why that 45-degree angle applies to the R2 building, and that's why it does not apply to the R1 building. There was some conversation about how that would impact the proposed design. I think Commissioner Fung had asked about this drawing in particular, so we brought that back for your review this evening. This is an approximation of how the building does not comply with that 45-degree angle. So, anything that's kind of in front of the shaded, shaded angle. Again, there have been extensive conversations between the developer and the neighbor, neighborhood, going back as far as back in November of last year, and then also just a number of conversations and meetings and discussions really over the last four months leading up to this evening. There have been concerns about privacy, about the mass of the building, about noise concerns, construction. The 45-degree angle obviously has been a concern to the neighborhood. And so, in an effort to try to alleviate those concerns and to try to better, provide a better transition between the size and scale and mass of this proposed project to the neighborhood, there have been a number of considerations between the project developer and the neighbors. We spoke last week about how balconies have been removed from the proposed design on Floors 6 and below. We talked about how there would be a series of improvements that would be constructed to help with that transition between the building and the neighborhood to the north, in particular to the homes at 500 and 503 Hemlock respectively. These involve a 12-foot-high wall that would be planted along the property boundaries. There would be trees that would be planted along the property boundary to further screen and mitigate any impacts. There would be a new deck and cover and pergola that would be funded for the property at 500 Hemlock, temporary sound barrier, visual barrier during construction. The colored panels, the change in the color palette on the building is a direct result of discussions between the city and the neighbors and the developer, and also feedback that was given at both Planning Commission and City Council. And so, with all of that in mind, and there had been a lot of conversation about how do we actually effectuate all of these discussions, and the answer has always been that there would be conditions of approval imposed as part of the project. So, what we now have, and I do have to apologize, in the design review permit, Resolution 1904 has all the findings of fact as well as all of the conditions of approval, and specifically, conditions 17 through 26 are directly related to the Hemlock neighborhood. During the course of making, putting the packet online last week, we had made a copy of a double-sided resolution. Why, is why you're missing some pages. We did rectify that, so I apologize for that. Just wanted to point that out. But in effect, that resolution, if you choose to act on that this evening, that does contain all the findings and all the conditions of approval that would be imposed and run with this, with this particular project. I showed you this slide last week, and this had to do with where the balconies had been removed on the R1 and R2 buildings. And so, all of that leads up to sort of where we, we had a little bit of a conversation about the amendment that would be needed in the, in the Millbrae Specific Area Plan, Station Area Specific Plan, if the building were to stay in its present form, right? So, because again, it's not complying with the 45-degree angle, but we do have a number of conditions that have been imposed that have been discussed between the neighbors and the developer. And so, with those in mind, the question then becomes, is it appropriate to amend the specific plan, given that we have a number of other transition conditions in play? As it stands right now, again, the project's not compliant with the 45-degree standard. The standard is really intended to provide for additional building step back above, on the upper levels. It really is a transition standard. In your, in the Report 7B, I have a series of, there's a map in there that shows you the page 5.15, and specifically shows you a little bit about how that standard is set forth in the Station Area Specific Plan. So, the amendment would, what we've thought about as a way to amend this particular section is there's a map within the specific plan that basically requires this 45-degree step back for two very specific areas of the city. And given that we believe that these conditions really are getting at the intent of creating even, maybe even a better transition than what is currently in the plan, what we've thought as a sort of an artful way of going about the amendment is to remove the notation on the map within the specific plan that would essentially just take away the transition standard for this site only, right? So, it'd be left in the other area of the city, but that for this site, that transition standard would not apply. So, that is the idea of how we'd go about doing that. Here is the map that's currently within the specific plan. As you can see up here at the top, the highlight in level, in yellow, there is sort of a squiggly line here, and there's a squiggly line over here near Aviador. Is that near Aviador? I forget. Yeah. And so, if you can see down in the bottom part of this map, the key shows this squiggly line, and that is where it indicates transition to single-family neighborhoods. So, the way that the amendment would be handled would be to remove the squiggly line. There's no language change that would be needed. It would essentially just be changing the graphic on the map from this to this, such that it's not required for this portion of the, of the plan. Excuse me. So, with that in mind, city staff is recommending that the Planning Commission, you know, hold a public hearing and adopt Resolution 1904 to approve the design review permit, the master sign permit for the Sarah Station Project, subject to the findings and conditions. And then also for the, for the amendment, we would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 1905, which would, would then be your recommendation to, to the City Council for approval of the specific plan amendment. So, again, two actions. The design review permit and the sign permit is, is your purview, so you're making a decision this evening. The specific plan would be something that you'd be recommending to Council. In terms of feedback that was heard at the March 11th Planning Commission meeting, we heard a number of comments about the lighting along California Drive Extension and how the interface with the BART platform might work. And we wanted to understand, you know, what kind of lighting fixtures are being proposed along California Drive. There, there were some comments about the Sarah Station Project signage at El Camino, California, and that it had been dropped off of the original design. Quickly, what we were able to find is that within the specific plan, there is a cross-section design for California Drive, and it does require that there would be light, light standards on the area on the street of California as it relates to this project. And we have further information about how the width of the sidewalk inside and street for California Drive Extension, and I can get more information on that for you. And what I wanted to point out is that the applicant has come forward with some lighting design standards and fixtures, so we can take a look at those this evening. Then lastly, there were a couple of comments about public art and preference for water feature fountain type with seating between the R1 and R2 Plaza. And then there was concerns about the lack of street-level activation around California Drive and sort of that, making sure that doesn't really become dead space. So, those are the, the primary comments that I heard back from March 11th. I think the applicant is prepared to, to respond to the commission tonight and show you some of the updated drawings. Any updated drawings that would be voted on or approved will become part of a formal set that would then pass on to City Council. So, I know that was a lot of information. I went a little fast, but I'd be willing to take any questions at this point now. I know that we have members of the public here to speak, and the applicant team as well. Thank you.
Anything right now? We're good? Okay. Next? Okay. The applicant wants to come up, show us some new stuff?
Commissioners, thank you for having us back. Bill Higgins, who's the architect for the residential buildings, is actually going to share the revisions per the design we talked about, and also the lighting standards.
I can take the materials up here, Bill.
Okay. Commissioners, thank you, thank you, Paul. Is it on?
I think that's on.
It's on now. Can you hear me? Okay. So, what Paul's laid before you are the, the samples for the colored materials for Buildings R1 and R2. And what we'd like to do is just briefly respond to your comments you made last time, which Brad has outlined, and focus on those elements. We tried to simplify the, the color palette and clarify it for which building, and that's why this, this sort of tray of the two samples reflect that.
But firstly, there were some, a few other comments from the, from, a few other comments from the neighbors about the clarification on the retaining wall. And this diagram wanted to show that it reflects that there will be a screen wall the entire length of the California Drive Extension from the corner at 500 Hemlock out to El Camino. Not all of that will require a retaining wall, but this is the length of the screen wall. Retaining wall will be in those zones where there's a grade change between the California Drive elevation and the elevation of the respective property. It actually starts in these zones, and it kind of tapers off as it moves towards El Camino. But just to be clear, that the screen wall, which will be 12 feet on this side, will taper down to a fairly normal height as it gets to El Camino. But there will be a screen wall as indicated in the conditions of approval. There was a discussion about the lighting, and so there is proposed street lighting that will adhere to the standard guidelines of the City of Millbrae for street lighting that will occur on the property, on the development side of the California Extension from El Camino down to the BART station. The particular fixture that is being proposed is this particular fixture, this Vega pedestrian light, which is about 10 feet high. And I have actually, let me just pause for a moment. So, it's this fixture here, which is commonly used in conditions like this to provide, especially in a residential development, you don't want to be creating these, these highlights of light that would disturb residents, but you want to be able to safely and cleanly light the pedestrian paths. So, this is the, the fixture that's being proposed. And the applicant, there's variations of it. The applicant has consulted with a supplier that will do a light study to determine the exact fixture size and the ambient light that is trans, that's transmitted on the sidewalk. Go back to... Sorry.
While you're doing that, we did want to share that per Brad's earlier comment, all lighting will conform to the, the, the specific plan. So, there's lighting standards in this, pardon me, in the specific plan, so all lighting will conform.
And you can see in the section here, the relative scale. This is the sidewalk adjacent to the R1 and R2 building, and the bike path, this is just sort of a cutaway of a part of the, the full street section. But to give you a sense of the height of the fixture itself, relative to the pedestrian and relative to the height of the building and the street trees. So, you'll see it maybe here. It sort of gets lost in the, in the tree landscaping, but it'll be in this zone, parallel with the line of trees. So, it'll be an alternating pattern depending on the, the specific plan's requirement for spacing of the, the lights. And then the same section again shows the, the screen wall relative to 500 Hemlock, 12 feet on the side of, of the California Drive, which translates into around 15 feet on the side of the applicant with the enhanced landscaping to additionally screen. And that site drawing also continues in another section of California Drive. So, those were sort of two of the elements that came up in the discussion about California Drive that we wanted to respond to. The other thing that we wanted to show you is that we tried to simplify the, the palette, so make it, we think, is a high-quality material, this terracotta rain screen system. We have a palette on the R1 building, which is lighter with a light sepia color and a taupe color for accent. And then on the R2 building, we have sort of a, a light burnt sienna, if you will, plus a, a, a sand light tan color as the palette. And I'll kind of show you where those occur. Like along here, we felt that, and Commissioner Fung had made a comment relative to this, that the lightness of the ground-level storefront read better as a light-colored material versus a dark-colored material, which we had showed earlier. But the idea was to continue that light color and bring it up into the center zone where we have these units that, that face Sarah, so that it helps with the composition of a continuation of the color acts as a, not only a base for the buildings, but acts as a, a zone between the buildings. And then the buildings themselves would have the terracotta color, which is in the tray, the, similar to the, the light burnt sienna. And it could be a blend of, what's good about these materials, you can get a blend between, almost like in a brick, you can get blends. So, you get a softness of color change. Another view, this is from El Camino, showing the, that color palette and how that lighter tan color rises to the units in the, in front of the courtyard. This image also shows the, the sort of light sienna color for R1, and one location and suggestion on the sign location for the Sarah Station sign. And as one member of the community mentioned, "Let me see it without crick in my neck." So, it reads vertical from top to bottom. You can see Sarah Station. That faces El Camino. I'll show you, in addition to that, we're looking at putting it on the side facing California. But you can see the warmer palette, the lighter in color than before, but it's still a warmer color palette. And then just more of a higher level view along Sarah, again, carrying that lighter sand tan color down and bringing it up into that mid-zone to separate the two buildings. This is a view of the courtyard between R1 on your, R2 on the left. This reflects the color palette of R1, which has the sort of sienna, terracotta color, and then a taupe terracotta color, taupe-colored terracotta, and how we organized it and eliminated the balconies and created a projection to the top. We will have the terracotta... We will have the terracotta panels here, always slightly different. Of course, the final sample will be, as part of a mock-up, particular color would integrate with the storefronts. And so these are the elevations. This is the California Drive elevation. This is the elevation facing Hemlock, but without building R1 in front of it. So you can see the R2 building entrance and the step-back and a landscaped terrace at Level 7. Again, we're going to go through rendered views, which we modified a little bit to reflect this color palette. The rendering itself, in particular this one, doesn't show the balcony, that does exist. I think that was pointed out last time. But the focus of this was to focus on the activity and the height of the ground-level retail, which is going to be 20 feet high storefront with a thing that shows it on the, here you can see it clear, is the option to, yeah, this is about a 15-foot-wide wall, where the other one is about a 10-foot-wide wall.
Okay. And you're saying, so if you put it on the north-facing one, then it could be lit?
Well, I just, we think it could be, more opportunity to light it, yeah.
So if it was on the El Camino-facing one, you're...
It still could light it. It'd be a question of whether it's backlit or it's frontlit.
Okay, thank you.
Through to the chair, if I may. We also talked a little bit about last time, the use of that Galleria lobby could possibly be a commercial space for a major retail tenant. Is there any update on that?
Answer is yes. It is actually designed to be a retail space. It really is a matter of who the tenant would come in and lease it, but the space is dedicated as a retail space facing into the lobby and both sides of the perception and elevator lobby to the building.
Okay. So it will, I guess what I'm trying to get at is you will try to get some sort of an anchor tenant, something prominent, something that would generate a little bit of revenue rather than just selling groceries, I'm hoping.
Talk about it a lot, but the reality is, is this is all commercial space, and this is all residential space with units facing the street, with windows facing the street. So it will have eyes on the street, directly at street level, looking out onto the street. So it won't be a walled area that you're going to be walking along without either someone living or working next to you. It will be active.
Okay.
I've had another question about the retaining wall or the screened wall. In the original plans, it has the pedestrian bike paths, and originally it had a, I guess, a bike path going into the Hemlock area. So with this screened wall, just to confirm, there's no opening in that? There's no gate or access?
That is correct. The neighborhood did not want access directly from California into the neighborhood, so there'll be no access.
And in terms of the signage, it says Sarah Station. Oh, go ahead.
Let me just clarify some. If you're talking about a bike path that would be on the back fence, Hemlock, between the rails and the fences, that could, I'm sorry, that could be accommodated. It depends where the city wants us to start the fence.
You're talking about back here?
Right. I mean, behind, yeah, behind the properties, yeah.
If I may. Just want to confirm, I think I discussed this with you last time in the last meeting. The 45-degree plane, the agreement between the developer and the Hemlock neighbor is fully worked out?
Brad referred to that earlier.
Yeah. So the conditions that you have before you in Resolution 1904, both parties have seen those conditions. I believe there's generally agreement on there, but what I did learn today is that I do think both parties still are looking at that language, and there may be a few other points. So if and when we get to that place tonight, if there's a motion to approve, then there would be a condition that I would recommend that we add to the resolution, and we can talk about that when we get to that place. My sense is that there would still be some continued conversations that could yield some slight changes to the language that's before you even tonight.
Would it create any significant impact to the proposal being presented today?
I don't believe so. I think it's really just getting both parties to hone in and be very clear that the expectations on both sides of what's going to mean in terms of either monetary contributions or how the physical improvements will be staged, and just what the direct impact from any physical improvements would be on the neighboring property. I think they just drill down so that both parties are very clear on that.
The way it is with the commercial space, whether it's the Galleria, the live-work space that they're planning to build, the tenant that they're going to come in and the type of business and how to use the space, do we get to see them again as a use permit application?
That would only occur if one of the proposed uses, let's say, was subject to a conditional use permit as specified in the specific plan. If not, then it would be a use that's permissible by right. It would just come directly in for a tenant improvement and building permit.
So they wouldn't have to go through design review again with the...
That's correct.
I'm sorry, just, but like for the signs, if they have like a major change in the signage, they would though, right?
If there were a major change in signage beyond what we're seeing here this evening, then yes. And that holds true with any component of the building. If there's a major design change, they would have to come back for the plane commission.
Anything else right now? Okay. Thank you. We'll do public comment now. Speaker slips. Do I have any?
One. Oh, there's one. Thanks.
Okay. There's three. So we got the timer here, three minutes each. Let's be mindful. And Christina Ducote.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone here tonight. My name is Christina Ducote, and I live at 500 Hemlock. Thank you for doing this public hearing. To recap, the impact of Sarah Station, there is significant physical and visual impact to my property. For years, I've seen the results of poor development, decisions that have negatively impacted the Hemlock residents. Everything from partial zoning of residential homes to commercial, the hotel balconies imposing crude behavior on property owners, and the Taiwoos parking fiasco, which still burdens us with their patrons speeding down our street, illegal turns, and inconsiderate behavior. In prior meetings, I asked that your approval of this project be conditioned with criteria that mitigates the negative impacts to my home and neighborhood. This is reasonable and fair. To make you aware, this past week, there was a meeting held for the first time with the applicant's contractor, and we were advised that a temporary wall will be constructed in two phases. The purpose of this wall is to allow work to be done for the permanent wall. This wall will remain in place for a significant amount of time. The first phase of the wall gets installed at my current fence line. The second phase of the wall gets installed approximately 10 feet onto my property. This is new information because it increases the magnitude of the negative impact of this project on my property. The project is not limited to just damaging some trees and landscape and the other items that I mentioned last week. In fact, the temporary wall will eliminate approximately 1,000 square feet of area we use every day. That is 18% of my property.
And it will be built, and I just want to get to a point where we're covered and we're protected. So wrapping up, please make sure the 40 can appropriately, if we're going to do it, make sure those conditions that we've all worked hard to get to are accepted and bound, okay? And we bind everyone to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Estancia Rodriguez?
Remain residue of stuff. We could build the wall and not go on the Ducote's property, but we can't plant the trees without going on the Ducote's property, and that's something they wanted. So I just want to be clear, we didn't add a wall or anything like that. That's a recommendation by staff. Also, you need to understand that there is a 15-foot public easement that goes through right where we're going to be working, and we are going to be required to divert and replace that drainage off of their property. So at the end of the day, they will have a property that doesn't have that easement on it anymore, which is an improvement to the value of their property and the trees and the number of trees that we're being asked to plant, are being asked to plant it. Those are not, that's not our proposal. That's what we've heard back through staff is what they want. So I just wanted to make clear that a lot of these design issues are not what we're proposing, is what staff and the Ducotes have said they wanted.
A question for the staff. Can we get some clarification on that second wall? What that is about? Is it permanent or is it temporary? What's the story? I just want to get some, you know, official understanding here.
Right. So the idea behind the temporary wall is to create a barrier for...
So it's temporary?
It is. It's a temporary wall, yeah. I'm sorry. So built, you know, while the permanent wall is being constructed to, you know, mitigate any kind of impacts from different construction. We have our, we also have, and also Harry Burrows, project engineer and manager here this evening, if you've got more detailed questions. But essentially, it's a temporary wall that would mitigate construction impacts while the main wall is being constructed. So once the main wall is constructed, they take the temporary wall out.
So they're not going to lose that square footage in terms of the lot space?
They're not going to lose it in the...
We'll put it up, we'll do whatever the requirement is, but I think it's a little bit over-shue with cars turning right onto El Camino. So it's going to come down, by the time you get to the setback line of that, the wall will be, there won't be a wall. It's 15, 20 feet from the edge of El Camino, but it'll, there will be a stop to the wall.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think Mr. Mizner had mentioned before that you have some changes, possible proposed changes, so you would maybe hear those before we...
Right. So since we started to get the details, I think there, you know, there's still some language that needs to be worked out. So to that end, you know, one approach is by adding a condition of approval. And I'll just, this is what I've been thinking about, something to the extent that says any changes to any of the provisions and conditions 17 through 26 shall only be with full agreement by and between the 500 Hemlock property and MSS. Final language of any revised conditions will be included in the resolution submitted to city council. So if that's, if that's a condition that's acceptable, then that gives some flexibility to allow for some language changes. If it was overly substantive, I would take some issue with that, but if it's within the margins, and I think that's something that we can work with, then I would highlight that for city council's understanding that there were some changes to those conditions post-planning commission. But what they would be getting are the conditions that plan authorized and approved, and then I would explain to them what changes have occurred and then have a backup set of conditions so they understand what has been agreed upon enjoyment of their property. So that's something that clearly needs to be worked out above and beyond that. I don't know that there's anything else other than perhaps some word, some language changes in here that are just wordsmithing. Harry, if you want to speak to that, or, yeah, I have Mr. Burrows come up and just...
Yeah, hi. I'm Harry Burrows. I'm the city's project manager for the TOD projects. And I think Brad's correct. I think we're down to, you know, very specific, we're very close. I think we're very close between the Hemlock neighborhood and the developer in turn.
Make additional changes, that there's a way, we're sort of getting your blessing for a way to present that to the council, since they, taking it up on review, have an ability to read, take it, we call it de novo, but just a fresh look at it. But you're finishing your job, you're giving a final thing. If they don't come up with any additional conditions, then what you've done will be going to the council. Now, they still have the ability to change it if they want to, but what we're doing is trying to regularize, in case there is additional back and forth, a way to present that to the council in kind of a rational way, so it's not confusing. And I know it's a little confusing to describe how to not do it, but that's where we are.
And thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. Can I then, just through the chair, can I, I'd like to go through, I have some questions about the condition, the special conditions. So special condition, item 18, 17, the special, special condition, special neighborhood conditions. Special neighborhood transition conditions, number, item 17, on the second page, on the, oh, page three, I'm looking at the, anyway, 17. So the second paragraph, A, A, sorry. I think they're all, the same conditions are in there, the same conditions are in both projects, so I'll just, I won't go by page number, I'll just go by item number. So special neighborhood transition conditions, item 17, the second paragraph, that's not clear, the last line, it says, "For the western portion of building R1 between El Camino Real and the south extension of the common boundary between 200 El Camino Real and 503 Hemlock." It feels to me like there's either a wording issue or, because it says between El Camino Real, and then it says, and a south extension of the common between. So can you just, it might be that I'm just, it's a lot of words, so if you can please clarify what that means, that would be very helpful. Maybe a site plan? Yeah, thank you.
So that condition is trying to explain that the common boundary between 200 El Camino Real and the Hemlock, 503 Hemlock is right here. So if you were to extend this across to the building between that point and El Camino Real, so it's meant to describe this portion of the R1 building.
Okay. I mean, I know what the stretch is. I think the wording is a little bit awkward, was a little awkward for me, because it's between this and then, between this and the this between that. So it's a little bit awkward, the wording. I don't know how else I would word it, but I just think...
Well, if we have the flexibility with that added condition to make minor amendments, I think we can make clarification.
Okay. Yeah, just because it was like, I had to read it a few times, and I'm like, I know what section you're talking about on the site plan. I just, between this and this between that. So just, I think it might be nice to kind of clarify it a little more. And then, transition wall, 12 to 4. In item 20, there's discussion about the restoration of any removal and temporary relocation of the storage shed, irrigation lines, jade tree, et cetera, and then restoration to their original condition. Who is this done by? Who has a responsibility for doing this?
The way that it's currently written in the condition would be Vince's contractor would come in, install the wall, would have to relocate temporarily any improvements that are within the yard, and if anything is damaged during that process of building the wall, then they would have to restore it.
Okay. So the responsibility is just squarely within the developer's contractor?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then a small one, just a typo on item 21. The first line, onsite demolition of the existing building? Is that what you mean? Or exiting building?
Existing.
Existing building, right? Okay. So it just needs to be, and there are a few little things here and there, but those other ones don't bother me, but exiting and existing are two actual words. And I'd like, what is a timeline plan in terms of the work to be done with this happening? Because it seems like, so 21 is referring to a separate, a different sound barrier if that wall isn't constructed, right? So can you just walk us...
Yeah, so let me clarify or expand upon what the applicant said when he was up here, just so that everyone's clear on what these two walls are. So in an ideal world, all the construction work on the site would be done at once, the demolition... demolition, and then roll right into the improvements. But that's probably not the way that it will happen. The demolition will probably happen in advance. So the intent of the conditions are to protect the Hemlock neighborhood both during the demolition phase of the construction as well as the construction of the permanent wall. So the idea is that during demolition of the existing buildings onsite, which this doesn't show the existing buildings, but if you can picture the existing demolition going on onsite, a temporary wall would be built on the property side, on the project side of the Hemlock properties along here. And that would be this wall that Vince described, which is a, it's essentially, if you can think about it in terms of, it's almost like a heavy moving blanket that you hang up from poles, okay? And it's sound absorbing and it also serves as a dust barrier as well, okay? And so that would be constructed along this edge while the demolition occurs. And that would protect these properties in Hemlock during that demolition, okay? Then after the demolition occurs, that wall can come down. At some point in the future, the construction of a storm drain within California Drive and the actual street improvements and the wall would be constructed four feet in height as it approaches El Camino.
At some point it ends.
Well, yes, at some point it ends. So at some point it becomes zero. But the last condition was referring to just this very last piece of wall within the Ducote's property. And that's, that distance we haven't defined yet. But what that is referring to is there's a portion of the back of their property that doesn't have direct visibility from this building, okay? And in order to give them maximum sunlight during the daytime and reduce the amount of shade, they wanted as an option to consider going forward, potentially having that section of wall drop down to below 12 feet. So that's why that condition was written, just to accommodate that request.
That was from the owner, the neighbors?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. I was just curious as to why that's, we're getting that step down. And then the transition between 50, transition going downward toward El Camino Real, what is the, what is the thought? Is that it's going to continue beyond 503 and then as soon as it hits the Taco Bell property, it'll just drop? Or are you thinking about a, what is the kind of, is it a gradual, like a sloping down that we're talking about or what is the thought?
I don't believe staff has looked at that level of detail yet. And Brad, you might want to expand upon that.
The primary concern is going to be, once it gets as close to El Camino Real for visibility coming in and out of that property. But certainly, we can, you know, be, working with the Taco Bell folks, understand the owner there, to understand what the needs would be adjacent to a commercial property. But I think that is the idea, that it would gradually come down in size, in height.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to see the condition 20, where it talks about the temporary wall, temporary sound barrier. Says prior to the start of construction of the wall and landscaping within the 500 Hemlock property, MSS shall install a temporary sound barrier between existing residents and the work zone. I guess the primary concern that I understand for the Ducotes was that there is that immediate encroachment on the property 10 feet north of the existing wood fence. And so if there's language in there to develop a construction sequence and schedule to minimize the encroachment of that temporary barrier or to prioritize the construction of that permanent wall so that the temporary barrier is only encroaching on the property during the time where the wall's constructed and no more than that. I think that condition might minimize the time that temporary barriers on the property. And then also, they mentioned here, there's a good provision in that same condition on 20. If there's any dispute between owners and MSS regarding satisfaction of said work, the city will provide interpretation and guidance to help reach resolution. I know that, tell me if I'm wrong, it's likely that the city will have weekly meetings with the contractors and the construction team to review the work to, and that if there's that opportunity to meet routinely with the construction team, that they set apart like monthly meetings to meet with the neighbors also, and that the city can document any issues or concerns that the neighbors may have or invite them to one of the weekly construction meetings once a month so that they can get an update on the project and discuss any concerns that they may have about the project.
Yeah, that's certainly the intent is to, at least during construction of the improvements, particularly along this boundary, to have regular interface between the neighborhood and the developer through, communication through the weekly construction meetings.
So if we can add that in the conditions, then I would document that.
Kathy? You done?
Can I go with something else or are we, I killed the special conditions. Just a quick one on the signage for the, when we look at vehicle circulation, there are some spots on Sarah Avenue where there's a rideshare can drop off and, drop off and pick up. And I noticed that there are no signs there. And I thought just something to consider is maybe having some kind of signage to designate those as areas might be kind of a, something to consider. I'm not sure if it'll be the most useful, but just, you know, where people know, you can meet your, you know, whoever's picking you up here and kind of have that signage in there on Sarah.
Joe, there's, in the signage program, there's actually specific signs, there's monument signs, and they have wayfinding.
Right.
See, where is that?
I mean, I'm looking at your signage plan. And then if you look at vehicle circulation, it has kind of designated spots, but it doesn't have a sign right next to it. So...
There is specific signage for the monument signs. Do you know which slide it would be in? Yeah.
I mean, I know you had wayfinding signs in the signage program. And I'm looking at, I'm sorry, it has no, I don't even know which packet this is from. But the signage placement, and I'm not seeing any signage placement on, like, right on, I don't have a page.
What you're referring to, timing, weekly? I don't, I mean, right now, we're, the neighbors are going to call the guys every time, every day. They're not going to wait a week if they don't have to or wait a month if they don't have to. So is, I'm just curi-
Feel like, you know, every month, we don't know what's, there might be some months where a lot's going, there might be some where it's not. And I'm, I think that's putting, I don't think it's necessary and it might be putting on a little more burden and for the neighbors too, you know? I mean, they've been coming out faithfully to our, you know, every, trying to come to planning commission, city council meetings and I don't know if, I mean, I don't know about them, but I just feel like it's not necessary.
I agree.
I totally agree that I don't think it's necessary to write it up as a condition. And staff will be available as I'm sure the website will be there.
Yeah. In San Francisco, when we work on large public projects in my regular work, we have public outreach meetings for very large projects. And I think for a large project like this, I might warrant just having a standing meeting so that the neighbors feel that they have a forum where they can express and share their concerns and just not have to feel like they have to just keep calling and bugging or feel like a nuisance to the project, but that there's something available for them to always be able to show up at and get an update on the project, the status, construction, any concerns.
I don't think that the project people will think of the neighbors as a nuisance, at least I hope not. That they're going to set up that website to have constant contact with anybody who has any concerns. And that's important. And if you have a meeting, there's a lot of prep that goes into it. And if there's no burning issue at that moment, then people are going to be planning a meeting with nothing to talk about. And that is a waste of people's time. So if there, unless this all breaks down at some point, and then later on, the staff can suggest, you guys need to talk more often, but I don't think a schedule of meetings is necessary.
Because the way that it's read in 21 is if it occurs, if the demolition occurs in advance and separate from construction of the wall and landscaping on the Hemlock properties, then there'll be a temporary sound barrier. So it almost sounded like if the wall on the Hemlock properties happens, then that sound curtain will, that sec, the one on the property will not be necessary. Is that not true then?
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I believe the question is, if the permanent wall goes up first?
Yes.
So if the permanent wall goes up first before the demolition, which quite frankly...
Probably won't happen.
I don't see it happening. But if it were to happen, then the temporary wall would go on the property, within the property, the wall would get built, okay? And then the demolition would occur with the wall there, the permanent wall there. There would be no need at that point for any temporary wall because the permanent wall would be in place.
Okay, that was my ques, so, so that is, so if that permanent wall went up first, you don't need that second wall, right? That was what I, different, what I heard from staff. So, okay, so no matter what, I mean, so if that permanent one goes in first, then that second curtain is not necessary.
No, I don't think, I think you're talking about two different things.
Yeah, first and second is confusing.
Right. There's, there's, when they demo the lumberyard and all that, okay, they need the big giant curtain that's on the project side. That will go up whenever they do the big demolition.
Regardless.
Regardless. But whenever they build the wall next to 500 Hemlock, the temporary curtain will go on the Ducote's property, no matter when. Whether they build the wall first or second in relation to the demo, that mitigating curtain needs to go up.
Right. So no matter what, the one that's going on the Hemlock property has to go up. So that's not my question. My question is the one that's on the project property, maybe that's how I should say it. The one that's on the project property, does that have to go up no matter what? Or if that permanent wall is already in place, is that enough to mitigate the construction?
If the permanent wall is in place, it will be much more effective than any temporary wall on the side. So there would be no need for a temporary wall once the permanent wall is in place.
Okay. Thank you. And maybe my question to staff earlier was, I was misunderstanding it. So I had heard it from them as we need it no matter what. So, thank you.
And are there, are there any barriers to putting up that permanent wall? Like do they need to be a lot more street improvements and sidewalk improvements first before they can put up that permanent wall?
It will happen concurrent, probably in advance of the actual finish work. Ideally, most likely what will happen is the underground work will occur first. There's a large box culvert that needs to be constructed within the realigned California Drive. So that, that work will probably occur first. And maybe the wall construction starts concurrent with that, but it'll be all within that same timeframe.
So does the Hemlock wall need to, temporary barrier need to be in place while they're doing all those improvements? Or can the, can the permanent wall be constructed while that, before all those other improvements are made?
Yes, depending on the phase in construction, yes.
There is still so many drawings that have to be approved that it's kind of difficult for us to second guess a project. And I think that's what we have staff for.
I'm sorry, did we need, and I'll just, I'll be good. The signage, did you, did we need to say a statement in terms of preference or are we, are we talking about having just the sign, you know, the gateway, that corner sign?
Yeah.
We didn't address that, so...
Probably had kind of done that last time.
That we had done it last time? No, last time we just said come back and they did come back with possibility of either north facing or the El Camino facing, one or the other with the vertical.
As far as the signage on the median strip, I think we decided to go with...
No, no.
No, you're talking about the other project.
The other project. It's okay. That happens to everybody.
Happens to me every once in a while, too.
We've had so many median signs.
What median sign is, so the corner...
We did that. We're finished.
No, the one where we had said we'd like it because it was wrapped around the corner last time and then we said we don't want the wraparound. So either on the north facing or the El Camino facing. Do you need a...
Yes, we, yes, we would like the decision on that.
You need some decision, right?
We need to have the plans clear when they move on.
Okay.
All right. I like the El Camino side only because everybody can read it. I, I also wouldn't cry if it was on the north facing side, but I, and I do think it would be obnoxious if it was on both. So I would go El Camino side. Come on.
I agree with that also.
Okay.
Street facing side, less intrusive to the neighboring property. So it's facing the street, busy street, people can see it, view it.
I don't have a huge preference either way.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would go El Camino probably, but is it possible to have it, like a backlighting even if it's on El Camino side? Because it's, somebody was saying it was narrower.
Yes, we, we would have to defer to the signage designer and lighting designer, but yes, that's possible, yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with the El Camino. I just thought it, we should, we needed to address it, so...
We did. Thank you for remembering.
So what we'll submit to the city council will just be the one preference.
I think that was the only one, wasn't it? That we...
I know. Are we ready for a motion?
Okay, since I talked a lot, I'll go ahead and pull the trigger to finish it because everybody's tired of me talking. So at least I should make up for it. So I would, first of all, again, thanks to, thank you to staff, to the developers, to the neighbors, everyone who's been working on this. And I think the whole idea with the 45-degree plane, it's not something that I think we should take lightly. Having said that, I think the nice thing is that there are really only two sections on our MSASP that had that going to begin with. And it's a little bit of a, more of a makes sense, kind of. But also because there have been a lot of mitigating factors, steps toward mitigation, which I think everybody's been trying to work towards. So, you know, we try to not take it lightly to, to change anything, but I think that in this case, people have made the efforts to do so. So do we do the motion together or separate? Okay. So I'll motion for the first one then to, where's my recommendation? Where am I? Yeah, 1904. So I'll make a motion to approve 1904, resolution number 1904. I don't need to read all this, right? So...
With number 27.
Right. So I don't, so resolution 1904, concurrent with the staff findings and conditions of approval, adding on the number 27 condition as Mr. Meisner read before to make sure that all changes are, are updated and sent to city council in a resolution, with an amended resolution. So is that enough to...
I will second that motion.
And before we vote, I want to say too that, that if we do go amend the plan for the 45, it isn't done willy-nilly. It isn't done without any thought. A lot of work has gotten us to this place. And so we have to recognize that. And so I, you know, I just wanted to say that out loud. Okay?
I'd like to say that I really appreciated the work that went into the original MSASP and the step-back design and the transition to neighborhoods. And that's one of our key elements that we look at for all designs of all housing projects and other projects is compatibility with the neighborhoods and sizing, massing, and so forth, compatible with the surrounding environment. Just like to mention that, too.
In terms of this 45-degree plane, I'm, I think I'm the one who sort of talked most In general, I'm not a big fan of just sort of changing the game plan as we go, just to accommodate projects, right? We designed the MSASP... we go, just to accommodate projects, right? We designed the MSASP for good reason, there has been a numerous discussion, months and months of work go into it before we decided what the MSASP should be, where these residential transitions should go into, right? The scribble line, I mean, it was there for a reason at the beginning. I'm, I guess I'm somewhat encouraged to hear from the neighbors and the applicant where they were able to finally come to some sort of a conclusion, work out the differences, and come to some mitigations for the neighbors, which is very, very important, right? Big hands to both Mr. Muzzi and Mr. Ducote. You know, as far as the temporary wall, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's more of a construction management type thing. It is within the purview here, although it is something probably best left to the staff as well as the applicant and the neighbors to work it out. I would highly encourage, in fact, I think it's in the stipulation that there is a final agreement before it goes into council. So I think I'm comfortable with that particular strategy. In general, these things are usually construction management, so they're not within the design decisions. So having said that, I'm okay with it, although this is not something we would normally do on a regular basis, right? So we have to make very specific findings for, just take a eraser and just erase that scribble line, because we do so under the condition that there has been numerous times spent in working out between the applicant and the neighbors, with the staff being the sort of mediator in between, and ensuring that this agreement is in place going forward. And I appreciate both party, all three parties working through that. But just before I vote, I wanted to ask the commission, everyone on the board, do, what's your vision on this space here, on that gallery? I know I've been talking about this, I don't know, since the day one we talked about this. I mean, this space could really be iconic for a major tenant coming in. I know Mr. Muzzi said many times, and it's better out loud, and I heard that Lao included, he doesn't need any more commercial space or retail space, because retail is dead from your perspective, unless Amazon is dying first.
That's weird.
But I still see Apple stores everywhere, and they're doing really well. So I just want to see what's your vision, right, from everybody on this panel here? I mean, I have a vision with this being a very iconic, many, many impressions, you know, with people riding or walking out.
Millbrae Stationery a specific plan, in accordance with the staff findings and conditions in, in 1904.
I think we have to add number 27 on this one, too.
On this, do we need to add it, too?
No.
I think it's, okay.
Nope.
Just to clarify, I had attached resolution 1904 for reference as you are going through the staff report for the specific plan.
Okay.
I just want to make one more comment about the discussion that we have a little earlier. I do understand that this is a design review, but as planning commission, I think our charter is more than just design review. We're chartered to make decision and guide the city's development, including land use. And what we allow coming in, what we want coming in, is part of our land use decision and the discretion on this commission. So this commission does a lot more than just signs and colors and everything else, but really just guide the city going forward, what we want the city to look like 10, 20, 50 years from now. So I think, I do understand, you know, that, I'm sure the developer, after they build it, they would, in the best tenant possible, to maximize the business return on your property. I have no doubt that you're going to try to do that. Yeah. So there's also a vision that I think we should all sort of, instead of saying the word "dream" about, but maybe have and work to a certain goal to try...
All right, we'll get started again. Thank you, people associated with 985 Larkspur, 13 Camino Alto, and 316 Juanita for waiting. Really, really appreciate it.
Which one first?
We're going to start it with Larkspur. Nine, where's my agenda? Yeah, 985 Larkspur. Okay, 985 Larkspur Drive is a design review permit to allow the demolition and construction of a two-story residence and a side setback and FAR exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor side setback and more than the allowed floor area ratio of a residence in the single-family residential zone. Staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. This project is located on a site on the south side of Larkspur Drive between Pinehurst Court downhill to the east and Crestview Drive to the west in the Meadows subdivision. The home is located in the central western portion of Millbrae on the south side of this steep west-east direction street that connects Skyline Boulevard and I-280 on and off ramps to downtown Millbrae. The 8,792 square feet interior lot contains a single-family two-story residence, including a two-car attached garage, and its own single-family residential identified in the general plan as low-density residential. The existing non-conforming floor area ratio is 63%, 4,149 square feet. The existing residence consists of a first-floor family room with one closet, front storage room, rear storage room, bathroom, two-car garage, covered rear deck, and stairway to second floor. The second floor consists of a master bedroom with walk-in closet, bathroom, second bedroom, and third bedroom with closets, and access to a covered porch hallway with two closets and a bathroom. A living room with fireplace, an open kitchen and dining room, and stairway downstairs. There are two existing retaining walls in the front yard, and the existing roof pitch is 212. The proposed project includes the demolition of the two-story residence and the construction of a new two-story residence. The new first floor will have a new front porch, made a new front room study, will maintain the existing two-car garage, an entry hallway to two bath, two bathrooms, living room and a bedroom, kitchen open to a new dining room, the prayer room, and new entryway off of the living room. In addition, a new backyard and uncovered deck will be added with stairway down the backyard hillside to two double retaining walls with terraced planters. The new second floor will consist of a front master bedroom, walk-in closet, master bathroom, first bedroom and second bedroom with bathrooms, a laundry area, stairway downstairs, family room with bathroom, and an enlarged family room. The proposed roof pitch of the second floor will be 312. In addition, the applicant will add a skylight, dome skylight at the center of the residence, in keeping with the, basically we'll be adding a dome skylight. In addition, the applicant is requesting a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required seven feet second floor setbacks on both the west and east elevations, where the two-story horizontal addition is proposed. The side exceptions are requested in order to match the architectural design of the existing house and provide a larger seamless family room. The length of the exception on both sides of the second-story residence will be approximately, will be about 17 feet 6 inches. The applicant is requesting the FAR exception due to the FAR nonconformity, which is due to the greater than 30% slope, which reduces the net site area available for development at the rear of the property. The proposed project will not significantly increase the nonconformity, and in fact, will reduce the nonconformity from 63% to 62%. The FAR exception will not be detrimental to the property and improvements existing upon any abutting parcel, and will be compatible with the property and the improvements existing or proposed upon the project site. Four adjacent neighbors were sent neighbor consultation forms, and to, the two adjacent neighbors on either side of the project support the... neighbors on either side of the project support the project. The two neighbors located at Sleepy Hollow, which is to the back of the property at the lower elevation, were sent certified mail receipts, but they did not respond to staff or to the applicant. Attaches the information, the table providing information on the existing, the required development standards, the existing setbacks, and then the proposed setback. As indicated, there's a zero-foot exception request on the second-floor west side, and then on the second-floor east side, there's also the zero-foot exception request. The maximum floor area ratio, existing non-conforming FAR is 63 percent or 4,149 square feet. And with the FAR exception requested due to the rear backyard area greater than 3 percent slope, it would be 62 percent at 5,182 square feet. The applicant will provide the four parking spaces. There's a two-car garage existing and two surface spaces as recommended by the residential parking guidelines. This is the existing site and first-floor plan. And this is the proposed first-floor plan, indicating the two-car garage and then the two spaces for the two front parking spaces, the new entryway stairway at this location, and then the horizontal addition to the back. This is the existing second floor. And this is the proposed second-floor addition. The shaded area here is the location of the second-floor addition and the requested side setbacks on both sides. These are the existing elevations. They have the existing front, west rear elevation and the east elevation. And this is the proposed rear elevation, indicating the stairway down and the terracing in the back, landscaping work. And proposed east elevation, proposed front elevation, and the proposed west elevation. The design review permit required findings are addressed here pursuant to Section 10.05.2500.C2. These are the findings required for approval. This is the setback and floor area ratio exception findings. And both of these, the side setbacks and the FAR exceptions, will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property and improvements existing upon any abutting parcel. And they will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be compatible with the property improvements existing or proposed upon the project site. Excuse me. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow the demolition and construction of a two-story residence and side setback and FAR exception to allow less than the minimum required second-floor side setback and more than the allowed floor area ratio of a residence in a single-family residential zoning district at 95 Larkspur Drive, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Staff believes that this design is, in keeping with the architectural style of the homes along Larkspur Avenue, and therefore feels that the setback exception and the FAR exception due to the steep slope in the back would be compatible with this site. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Sam right now?
I do, actually. I'm sorry, Sam. I always do math on you, and I'm going to do it again. You mentioned that the FAR exception goes down from 63 to 62 percent because of graded grading, backyard grading, and how much is added in, in terms of the lot, usable lot, if you account for that?
So I recommend going to the plans, which I'll-
The site plan?
Yeah.
A3? A1?
And I'll pull that up.
I'm sorry. A1? Yeah. Oh, is he on the survey? I'm on the site.
So I would recommend going to the survey, because the survey was done for the, so this would be, let's see.
Second to last, I guess, third to last.
This is plan sheet A1C. And this is the portion here that is the 30 percent slope greater. And this is the area that's going to be terraced. So there'll be two double retaining walls, one located here and one here. You can compare this with the existing.
Right. I just wanted to know what's the, how much extra square footage is coming in because of that change to the backyard?
Staff can look that up in the plans, and we'll need to look that up and get back to you on that.
Okay. Because on our sheet, A1B that we have, it has some calculations on here that show the exception request. And it looks like even, so what is-
There's also the easement also that's deducted out of there, but, so there's an easement, but it's the percentage at 30 percent over, that reduces the net site developable area. And so when you subtract that out, that's what's left over. And that's the area that they're adding. I'm not sure I understand your question exactly.
Well, because it goes from 63 percent-
Right.
And then it goes down to 62 percent. And you're saying that that's, that happens because there's some grading and two retaining walls added in that change.
Well, they're requesting the FAR exception, so if they subtracted out that 30 percent, that would put them way over FAR, so they're requesting that exception to use that whole lot, the whole lot, to calculate it out for FAR.
And I understand that. I'm saying, why does it go down? Why does that number go down from 63 existing? They're adding 1,800 square foot of space, living space, and then the number goes down to 62 percent? And the rationale for that, my understanding is that because there's backyard grading that's going on?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, that backyard grading, how much square footage does that add so that-
That's a good question. I would have, could have the applicant talk about that to, you may have a better idea of the exact number of square footage of the terraced grading area.
Okay. And then-
May be able to answer that question.
And then you mentioned there's an easement, so that 80, so what we're calculating off of is 7652 square feet?
Yeah, the 55 percent allowable is 7652.
Okay. And that's because the part that's not sloped, that's sloped less than 30 percent?
Right.
So what is the total lot, including the, if we add that back in, the 30 percent, greater than 30 percent? 8708. So if you add in 8708, 5182, out of 8708, I'm coming out as 67 percent. So it's just the numbers are all weird to me. And if you take 4149 out of 7652, 4149 out of 7652, that's 54 percent. So I'm not seeing it as an existing non-conforming FAR, to begin with. So just these numbers are really confusing to me. I'm sorry, maybe that, maybe we do need the, you know, the applicant involved in it, but to answer my questions. So I'll take back my question and leave it for the applicant.
Perfect.
Okay. Yes?
So the total lot area without counting greater than 30 percent slope, without counting the easement, it's 8,708 square feet. Is that correct? I'm looking at the survey, A1, under exception request number two, top right-hand corner. Line number six, total lot area, 8,708 square feet. Coming from the surveyor.
Yes.
Okay. What's 55 percent of that? 55 percent of that total lot area is 4,789.4 square feet. So assuming we did not take out the 30 percent slope, we did not take out the easement, the maximum they could build anyway would be 4,789.4 square feet. Can you confirm that, Sam?
So you're calculating 55 percent of lot area?
Of the total lot area, which is 8,708 square feet.
Yes.
So they're asking for an exception, not just because it's a 30 percent gray, but as well as an exception over all the entire lot? Because had the lot not been over 30 percent gray, they still need an exception.
Yes. Yeah, it's an existing non-conforming-
Wait. It's not existing non-conforming, because the existing house is only 4149 square feet. Right? Because, okay, we'll get to the existing, whether it's conforming or non-conforming a little later, but what I'm trying to get at is, the current proposal, as proposed, requires an exception whether or not there's an easement, whether or not there's a greater than 30 percent grade in the rear of the lot. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, if it, yes, it would need to, they would need to request an exception. If they're, I don't understand your question. You're saying that they, right now, if they, if they were building a house right now without-
Assuming this is a flat lot.
Right.
Assuming this lot is perfectly flat like a pancake, right? By building a 5,182 square feet house-
Right.
On an 8,708 square feet lot, they still need an exception, regardless whether or not they have an easement, regardless whether or not they have a 30 percent gray.
Well, they would, if it was a flat lot, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be requesting except they would need to meet the 55 percent.
No, they won't. That's what I'm trying to say.
What is the question?
Let me, if I could jump into the chair.
Please.
So what you're asking is that with what's proposed, a 5,182 square foot house compared to the existing lot size, then I think what we're saying is that that existing lot size or that existing FAR would be 59 percent FAR.
You're requesting an exception whether or not that lot, greater than 30 percent slope, whether or not it has an easement. The house is still too big for that lot. I just want to confirm that. If that's consensus, I'd like-
8708, right?
Yeah.
5182 divided by 8708, 59 percent.
Any other questions?
Do we, with some Sam? I don't, I don't. Any more for Sam right now?
I do have a question, unrelated to that. Currently, there's room for one car in the front because they put pavers there. If they're going to put a second car, that means that they're going to have to remove more of the landscaping that's there. And if I'm not mistaken, we have some kind of rule, and I can't remember it all, but that we can't have that much paving for parking.
Well, they're going to do permeable pavers, and our guidelines say that to meet the square footage, livable square footage space for what they're proposing, they need four spaces. So they have a two-car garage, and they're providing two spaces on the surface parking lot-
Right.
-on the side of the property, and they're permeable pavers.
Well, my question is that we have too much garage, we have too much space in the front for parking.
The guidelines state that they need to have two vehicles in the front yard to comply with the guideline, the parking guidelines. They're providing two vehicles, parking spaces on a permeable driveway in the front. The landscaping requirement requires 60 percent landscaping and 40 percent driveway. The driveway can be permeable, though, so the idea with the landscaping, so if you-
So it's 40, can you, can you go do those numbers again for me?
Well, if they provide the permeable space, they'll need to provide a permeable driveway for the two spaces, so that will, in fact, take up some of the landscaping. In order to do that, they have to remove some of the landscaping.
Right.
So, yes.
But we now have more parking area-
That's right.
-than we do landscaping, and I think-
It's a permeable surface, though, so-
And it's still, but it's still parking, and it, there's-
Well, the parking guidelines tell us that we should provide four spaces, two surface spaces and a two-car garage.
I understand that portion, but what I'm saying is, they don't have enough room for that, based on our guidelines of how much landscape area they're supposed to-
They have an existing driveway that's quite large right now. Let me look at the-
Yeah, I know. I was there. I drive past it all the time.
Yeah.
But what they're doing is they're going to have to get rid of more landscaping, and yes, they are permeable, but it's all driveway now.
Oh, okay. So would you, would you be okay without the two additional parking spaces in the driveway? Is that what you're saying?
Personally, I think if we're going to allow this, that place, that third place should be inside the garage. Inside. They could write-
Oh, okay. So that's an idea. So you would like the applicant to redesign their ground floor to add an additional garage in the living rooms area, or?
Right there.
Okay.
And then that could be landscaped-
Microphone.
-green.
So in the family room, so put the garage, tandem garage in the family room?
Well, I was thinking they could just go up from-
Microphone. You're not talking into the mic, Kathy? You're not talking into the mic?
Oh.
Should we, can we, bring the applicant up first, and then we'll-
Yeah.
-talk about possible design changes?
They are the-
Okay.
Unless we have more questions for staff, that is-
Clarifications, right?
Right.
We're good?
Otherwise, we can invite.
Okay. We get the applicant to come up?
But wait a minute. Oh. Your question was for four.
Sam?
Applicant?
Okay. Yes. Can I introduce the applicant?
My client is a very proud Millbrae resident. They don't want to give up that home, and they're trying to make that home livable for their family. And their family has changed a little bit in the years. And the father-in-law is handicapped and must be on the ground floor, and that's why we have a bedroom on the ground floor. And- And it promoted us to design the house that it was... That the main floor was on the ground floor with the kitchen and the garage study. We tried... The ground floor is what determined the size of the home. And I thought it wasn't absolutely sure, but the size of the lot, I thought it was that the floor area ratio, if it was a flat lot, would be... That we would be within that area. There was a change made on the second floor where the side setback, where we added on to the back, where we had to... We stepped in. But then, as we studied the structure, it was kind of a stupid structure to indent in that particular way. It was not attractive, and it didn't make any sense. So, we came straight up on the walls to have a reasonable design. If I can back up a little bit, why we're so determined to try to make that house livable for this particular family? About three years ago, we came here in front of the city council, and we moved the 15-foot easement from the back of the structure to the back of the lots. And we did... We got it moved for the entire neighborhood, not just this house. It had to be for everybody's benefit. And the homes, as they were built there, their decks, and there was structures on just about every one of the lots over the existing easement. The existing easement was empty. It had no pipes in it. No... It was not used by any utility. So, it was reasonable to move the easement to the back. And with this, we thought we could create a house that could fit this family, that they love Millbrae. And they insist that they're not going to move from here, because this is their home. And so, the whole design is based on making this structure work. And we went through this easement bit that took a year and a half or so. And we're trying to accommodate a handicapped person. So, these are the criteria that we used to design this home. They're very proud Millbrae residents. That's all I got to say. And, you know, I'm very proud, you know, that they hang on to their home. They're trying their best to make this residence, this location, work. They're willing to spend whatever it takes to make it work.
Thank you. Can you... Excuse me, sir. Can you come back up? We might have some questions for you. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Are you Mr.?
Ron Perner.
Okay, Mr. Perner. You're the architect.
Yes.
Okay. If you can help me answer some questions. We have a regulation here in Millbrae that the maximum FAR on any lot is 55%. Anything beyond that would require an exception or even variance in some cases. This house that is currently being proposed has a total FAR of 5,182 square feet.
Yes.
Can you tell us why you need that much space?
The space was really determined from the first floor, the requirements for the two-car garage, a kitchen, and a family room, and the handicapped unit, a bedroom and a closet, and a bathroom for a handicapped person. These... That was our main criteria, that we accomplished that on the first floor. The first floor is absolutely critical. The second floor was... Had to do a reasonable structure and make it work, we brought these walls straight up from the first floor. Maybe, you know, something should be done on the second floor, but the first floor would be very difficult.
Maybe let me rephrase my question a little bit more.
Okay.
In order for us to consider granting an exception, there has to... You have to be able to demonstrate some sort of a hardship, that this site is unique in a way that unless those exceptions are granted or variance is granted, that you cannot even build this house at all. Now, in this particular case, you have a lot size 8,708 square feet. Suppose you take out that 30% slope, take out the lot area that has slope greater than 30%. You still have a net lot area of 7,652. Assuming you also... By the way, what is the easement? What does it have in there?
I'm not following.
What is under the easement? In the rear 15 feet of the lot?
The last 15 feet is the easement.
What kind... What's on there?
There's nothing in the easement. It's an empty easement.
Yeah, but an easement...
Is it the water department? You mentioned pipes. Who's easement isment?
Nothing. I've got letters from all the utility companies, and they... None of them want to use that easement.
Doesn't sound right.
And you mentioned that it used to be further up on the lot, where the house used to be?
Yes.
Or currently is, right? You haven't torn down the house yet?
Right to the back wall.
And you move it towards the back of the lot?
To the back property line, yes.
Right, you move it towards the back of the lot?
Yes.
So, is that a pipe?
So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there a purpose for that easement?
Okay.
Whose is it?
Is there a purpose? Who was it deeded to?
Done by the original developer, Stonson, I believe. And it was intended that there would be electrical and all the other easements that would be in that easement, but there were never any put in there.
Interesting.
So, there are no power line in the back, no water line, no sewer line?
Nothing. And I have letters from the utility companies allowing us to move the easement, and that they were not affected.
And the easement is deeded to who? You said to the utility company which?
Utility companies.
PG&E, water departments? You know, PUC? Which one?
All of them have...
All of them.
Rights to that easement.
Okay, so it's a public utility easement?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have a 15-foot public utility easement in the rear of the lot, whether used or not, right? It was deeded for that purpose?
Yes.
Staff? What is our regulation in terms of calculating buildable lot area when it comes to having a 30% gray as well as having an easement in the rear that seemingly may be greater than 10% or close to it? Do we take out the 30% first before we look at the 10%? Or how do we?
We look at the first... With our design review worksheet, we look, we move the 10% of the easement. So, we do... We take out the easement first.
Okay.
But it's capped at 10%. So, I mean, it's added back in if it's 10%.
It's added back in if it's more than 10%?
No. It's added... So, if it's... Yeah, if it's more than 10%, it's subtracted out.
So, you allow up to 10%?
That's correct.
Easement that you do not take out from the developable?
That is correct, yeah. And then after that, you do the... You'll take out, remove the 30% slope.
Okay. So, I get the easement total square footage is 849.15 square feet, if my calculation is correct at all. Whereas the total lot area is 8708, so it's somewhat less than 10%. But this is something that I want you to confirm later on, okay? Because I'm multiplying 56.61 by 15. It's a trapezoid. So, you calculate it like a rectangle. My math is still good.
Right. So, that would be added back in, because it's...
So, you don't take it out of the developable area?
That's correct. You don't take it out.
But you do have to take out the 30%... Take out the lot area that is greater than 30% slope?
Yes.
Okay. So, the area that is greater than 30% slope is 1,056. So, the net developable area, with all the calculations already in place, is 7,652 square feet. With that, the total size of the house should be no bigger than 4208.6 square feet. Call it 4209. So, that would be roughly, based on a calculation here, to be confirmed later on, that the house should be no greater than 4209. Mr. Perner? Mr. Perner?
Yes.
Given the family condition, you know, they have accessible need, special need for accessibility. And I understand, and I can respect the need of those family, you know, in terms of what they need to build, right? Is it not possible for you to build a house that fits what they need? That is at or no greater than 4209 square feet?
Perhaps we can shrink the second floor and bring it towards the front.
Because that way, you would not need the exceptions or the variance.
It would be great. On the exception, that if we assume it was a flat lot and we met the FAR on a flat lot...
It's not a flat lot, right? I mean, we do take out...
It's only the area that is at the lower corner. Most of it is in the easement.
Correct. Which we did not deduct from the developable area. I guess my question to you is this.
But the FAR goes and it takes up the easement area as well. It counts the entire lot size.
Here's my consideration, Mr. Perner. You're asking for an exception, right? Without granting an exception, you can build 4209 square feet. So, what kind of hardship should we consider to give you to build a house greater than 4209 square feet? Because you're proposing 5182. What kind of hardship should we consider, if any, to grant that extra 973 square feet? Is that a fair question?
Yeah. I'm thinking it through.
Or possibly if the only one to come up?
The hardship, I guess, is the construction of the house. You know, it'd be kind of nice to be able to just have a rectangular property, you know. To come to that area, I'll have to move the rear wall in on the second floor. I can't touch the first floor. It destroys the whole concept of everything they're doing.
No. No.
Okay.
One other thing on the landscaping. One that hasn't been mentioned is that we're taking out the paving that is a walkway. There's a walkway there now. We're taking all that concrete out and putting it into landscaping.
You mean the front of the house?
Yes.
Yes. So, we are removing a surface of the sidewalk. And the other thing is, in most communities, the... When we do a driveway permeable, that it kind of relieves some of the landscaping requirement. I'm not sure about Millbrae, but other communities have given us that consideration.
Okay. All right. Enough for him right now?
Other questions?
Well, a couple more. So, on the drawings, too, right here for the driveway. On one of the drawings for A1 revision B, it shows cars parked on each side of the driveway. So, it appears that there's actually room for four cars in the driveway, too. So, it appears to be an oversized driveway that can accommodate four cars for that driveway.
Yes.
Okay. And then, just one other comment to consideration. If you were to redesign this to conform with our existing city code, I noticed that there is the one feature, roof feature, that has the dome on the front, on the top. And so, on various drawings, that dome appears. But, you know, it'd be good to be consistent to show how that would appear for the rest of the views from the front and from the rear elevations. My calculations here, it appears to be... I did the calculations. So, it appears to be up above the view from the front elevation. So, the front elevation has an elevation 390 plus 26 feet, so 416 feet. And then the dome on the side view, it goes above that to 400 and... Was that 419? 2420 feet plus. So, if you could just check the drawings and make sure it's consistent with the views, with the elevations.
Oh. Through the chair. I wanted to address the FAR numbers. I think the confusion there is in the staff report, the FAR calculation, the 63%, 62%. That was incorrect. The project data on the cover sheet C has the correct calculations and the correct numbers for the existing FAR and the proposed FAR. So, those were the numbers. It's... They're requesting 5% over. So, it proposed FAR of 5,802 square feet divided by the 8,708 lot gives them 60% FAR. And right now, their existing is 4,149 square feet divided by the lot 8,708 is 48%. So, the staff report needs to... Will be corrected. That's where the confusion was.
Okay. We'll go to public comment now. Are there any speaker slips for this project?
Just the architect spoke.
Okay. All right. Does anybody want to speak on this project? He doesn't... Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll close that part. We'll move on to more questions and discussion.
I have... So, do you think we can find that information about the parking? Because there has to be a certain amount of landscaping, and what they're doing is making a parking lot out in front.
So, they have the existing parking? So...
Well, I know they have...
the driveway, would the commissioners be fine with existing driveway, two car space directly in the existing driveway, the existing driveway area? Are you saying not to widen it? So, because there's a little bit of question interpretation as to having a driveway on the side, a parking space on the side of the driveway. When you, when that is recommended, that requires widening the driveway to do some type of driveway widening to allow that, to allow access into the garage?
Are they needing three covered?
Just, they're just required to have four spaces. So they have an existing two-car garage?
Has its 5,000 square?
Yes, that's correct.
So just a clarification, though, the way with two cars on the side of the driveway and then driving into the garage, so that would be two in the garage and actually potentially four out on the driveway.
Yeah, the staff agrees, that's potentially actually more spaces.
And that's, and there's something we have on the books that wouldn't allow that much parking.
Right, there's 60% landscaping required and then 40% driveway.
So that's what we're asking, do we have any calculations for how much is basically permeable and impermeable? This is what we're just looking for, I think. Even though you're saying the driveway is permeable, okay, they get like a credit for landscaping, but she would like to know the ratio that is proposed.
So it's 60?
Does it conform to our guidelines?
So the front of the house is how big? What's the front? You're right, you could basically have four cars in front, which is not part of... So it's 60/40, I couldn't remember.
Are you the homeowner?
Yes, no, my father-in-law.
Okay.
Very ill.
Okay.
Working with his for last three years.
Okay, just go to the microphone, that's fine.
Because he forgets something.
That's okay, just go to the microphone, explain everything. Thank you, so we can all hear.
Good evening.
Oh, turn that one on, or...
Very long day today.
Turn it on.
Tiring.
Turn that one on, please, I don't think it's on.
Okay. This is three park, outside parking right now available. I have, I can show you if you guys can come to my house, because I'm very tired and my father-in-law is very ill right now. He was in hospital for 34 days last month. And we are doing for him, and that's his house. Okay, and I respect mostly old people, because he is helping us very good. And please, you guys can understand him. This is two-car garage inside, right now we can park three car outside without touching any landscaping. But Sam told us to do more landscaping, so that's why we did the, we cut this area. And if you guys don't want us to cut that area, we can live as it is. Still, we can have a three-car garage, three-car parking outside in my driveway.
Okay, perfect.
Right now. I parked, I don't have that many car, but two inside and three outside.
Okay.
Even my, all like, my neighbor, they are renting the house. And I don't know, upstairs, two different client. And they have so many car they're parking in my outside, we don't park outside.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
She has, she is right one way, because she don't want to cut the driveway, that's right, but he told us you have to move that.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
Through the chair.
Yes?
I just wanted...
Can you stay?
Wait, excuse me ma'am.
Ma'am?
Wait, maybe one more question, can you go back over there? Thank you.
Can you stay, please? Sorry, your name one more time, ma'am?
My name is Bana.
Bana?
Bha-va-na. B-H-A-V-A-N-A.
Okay. I asked that question a little early, if I may ask that once again, if you can explain to us. In order for us to consider hardship, in order for us to consider granting exceptions, we have to understand why you're asking for those exceptions and what the hardships are in order for us to even consider those exceptions. So the house that is currently being proposed, it's far greater than what normally we would allow for that lot, given the size of it. Do you have any reason why the house is so much bigger than the regulation would allow your house to be?
Right now, our existing house is like this much, right?
Okay.
And we are extending behind downstairs, because we are putting kitchen, because of my dad's health. So we like to have a kitchen and his bedroom and sitting room on first floor. And upstairs, we have a three-bedroom, that's it. Right now, we have a three-bedroom and family room. And other thing is, like, the, our house is on like, on the hill. I might, I cannot explain like as Sam explained, but on the slope, this side, we cannot put any window on the bottom floor. But if we go a little bit backside, we can put the window. And our, like, other crest view houses on the top, they add so much, and even they have lots of slopes. And I've been watching in Millbrae, there is so many like houses they are building right now. Even, I've been working with this city from two and a half years. And I don't get good response, and I've been very angry, because my dad, now he can, he is like, he has to go like three times a week on dialysis and everything. And no one helping right, I don't know what's going on. And temporary, I might move him to the other house. And we already working on that, too, in the other city, South City. And he don't want to move, because he's been there from entire his life. And if we take him in wheelchair even, we cannot take on the upstairs floor.
So I think we completely understand, I'm going to say, the downstairs, we totally get that.
That's why we are asking.
The upstairs, though, is very big, especially with the family room. Does the family room need to be as big as it's proposed upstairs?
Right now, we have family room, we're going to keep as it is. And then we have a three-bedroom. That's all we, a little bit we want outside, because in like, our street is Main Street. We cannot walk or anything. And we always have a cold. So we like to have a little bit inside, little entertainment area.
Okay. See, what Commissioner Fung is trying to explain is the proposed house is nearly 1,000 square feet bigger than it should be, according to the rules, okay? So we're just trying to find a reason why we should grant the exception to give you that nearly an extra 1,000 square feet, where most people wouldn't get that. We're looking for the special reasons why. So that's why we're asking, what is it, what is it about your unique family that needs this space as proposed?
Because we live with our in-law, and we taking care of them.
Okay.
So we understand that you have a unique family situation. There's a health condition that you're trying to take care of your father-in-law, father-in-law, you said?
Yeah, and I don't want to put him in senior home or anywhere.
Got it, no worries. But given all those hardships and conditions that you're trying to deal with, and you have a budget of 4,209 square feet to work with, could that be done within 4,209 square feet?
He's already got that, doesn't he?
So right now, his proportion is like 900 square feet?
According to, ma'am, according to our planning code, Millbrae planning code, given the size of your lot, given the topography of your lot and the condition of your lot, your maximum developable area, your floor area ratio maximum, without asking for exceptions or variance, is 4,209 square feet, including garages.
So if you guys not take exception, then we not going to demolish the house. We're going to ask you for the remodeling. Because if we don't extend on the top floor, we can live like garage as it is. We can leave the north wall as it is, and we can extend, extend on downstairs, that's all we can do. Then we have to change that to rebuild to the extension, that's all.
Which is okay.
I don't know, I have to ask my dad when I go to home tomorrow morning, I can ask him.
Which we can always consider.
Because he want to do it for, he want to stay with my kids, grandkids, and everybody, that's why he want to do it. He say he want little entertainment area on his end of the life. And there is some, I, house, we have friends and family live there, they got exception, so we ask for it. We request you, if you can. And we try our best to build a nice-looking house with the strong foundation. If we can do reconstruction, otherwise we can just live as it is, that's all. Right now, we planning this, last month, he was in hospital for 34 days. We, right now, we got, my husband got new house. Not new, but right now, we moving for him. Right now, we making the accessible bathroom in South City. Because we've been tired, and I came to city hall, and I told Sam, what are you guys doing? It's been three years.
Okay.
For this small house.
Commissioner Quigg?
And like, I came and I seen like big, big high-rise building here to me. They don't have enough parking, and I go to like downtown, they don't have enough parking.
Okay, we have to stay on topic here, it's getting very late.
I'm not happy.
And we want to settle your problem.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I did want to answer one of the questions. I know there was a question about the front yard landscaping. The property itself is approximately 53 feet in width, it's required a 20-foot front yard setback. So that's, you know, a little over 1,000 square feet at 60%. They are required to have upwards of 660 square feet of landscaping. So that's something that we need to verify on the plans to see if that's being met. Otherwise, one of the parking spaces would need to go away, and it'd need to be landscaping area.
And this is it, and this is three parking, and this is two parking, that's all I can say.
Oh, I...
Close this, close this, and I can request that, and with this wall, that's all I can say.
Sorry, okay, can you, we have to keep talking, can you please sit down, thank you.
So it's just, it says the project proposed includes the demolition of the two-story residence. Is that figuratively, or will it be a tear-down? It's just figures.
Does that work?
We are approving it based on what is... We're considering it based on what is being described here. If it is not a tear-down, then it should say remodel.
No, they use the word demolition all the time if they tear down some walls.
I...
They use it all the time, we've had this question before.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to be clear, there is, it's an addition to an existing home on both the first and second floor. It's being extended out to the rear.
Because I, that's why I said they could put another garage in, because I figured if they're going to be empty, they could put the garage on where the study is, because there's still a bedroom and a living room and all that kind of stuff, so at least I understand.
Please, one second.
No, I have to explain that, because I'm so tired.
Well, we're tired, too.
Last one, have yours. Okay. If anyone has a concern, I'll welcome you guys to come to my house. And I told Sam to same thing, you cannot put three garage anywhere, because the house is very narrow.
We get, that's okay, we're going to have a bigger discussion than the garage right now, we're okay right now. That's not where we're stuck, okay? So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's tired at work.
Discussion? Who wants to start?
Let me look at that photo.
Go ahead.
It is a very large house.
Are you on?
Okay.
It's very large, the way it is right now. I think at some point, it had to have been added on to at some point, because those homes were just not built that large.
That's really not...
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
Okay, so here's my... We listened to the applicant, we listened to the homeowners, representative of the homeowners. And I asked twice, maybe even three times, you know, we need to consider any hardship, if any, exists in order for us to even consider or grant any exceptions or variance of this magnitude. But I'm sorry, I haven't heard anything that would warrant granting an exception such as this, particularly when the house, with the proposal, or when the lot presents itself with a developable area of 4209 square feet, which is by all standard, a very large house. And it would be able to accommodate the family needs, whether it's medical needs or accessibility. You can design a house to fit your family with all the needs being described that we heard, within 4209. I've seen many houses being done that way, with much smaller house and still meet all the needs that you presented here. So at this point, I'm not finding anything that would warrant such an exception to be granted. And that's, that's my comment.
All right, anybody else?
I tend to agree, 42 is an extremely large, and I know it got about 7,000 square feet, but the grandfather could fit downstairs, just the way it is right now. And I mean, he doesn't, well, I can't say he doesn't need, because I, you know, it's, but logically, he has a bathroom, big bathroom, a bedroom, a living room, and a study. So it's like a one-bedroom apartment.
Excuse me, can I make an exception?
Right, who are you?
I am the youngest daughter of the here.
And...
Yeah, we can't just keep doing this.
What? No?
This is a discussion...
So it's almost 11 o'clock right now?
Discussion about commission.
You have...
You're asking for an exception.
Handicapped accessible. So we are trying to work around the city and my grandfather, and he wants to live with us, and we're requesting this certain square footage, so he could live with my sister and myself. If you are saying, ma'am, that he has enough space downstairs, I'm sorry, you're more than welcome to come to my home and see. Like, we've tried everything, we have made so many renovations, we've lived, I've lived there my entire life, I grew up there. And if he wants something on his last wishes, and we are going to try our best to make it like, accomplishable. We don't, we've lived in that house, and we've done so many things to it, and we renovated it, and it's been that same size. We've never extended anything, we've never decreased anything, we've done as much as we could inside.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, thank you.
If I may, through the chair, so I mean, definitely feel for, feel for your family and all that you're going through, so it's not that we're not trying to help. Having said that, it is a big home, and the way that it read is that the FAR exception is requested because there was that 30, greater than 30% slope. But even if we add that 30% slope back in, it's still big, it still exceeds the FAR. And so it's really difficult for us to be able to just make that exception, because it's not a, it's not a small, I know it doesn't fit your needs, but it's not a small home by everything that we've seen. Actually, we're like talking 2,000, 3,000, maybe 4, and right now, we're talking 5. One maybe suggestion is, I'm just looking at the second floor. So the first floor, I don't have an issue, maybe that can be moved out. The second floor, there's a bump out new addition to meet up with the first floor in the back. If you, so there's an existing, and then that extension for that family room, that's about 700 square feet just there. It's 20, 40-something by 17 and a half feet. So it's 700 square feet. So if you just didn't bump that part out, you're already taking out 700 square feet. Yes, you don't have that family room.
We will be able to do a certain number, and then they can come back with it as...
I'm just about the size and mass of the house. And then sit down with them immediately and work with their architect to look at how we can maybe reduce some of that second floor, maybe look at popping it out on the ground floor. Perhaps there is an area where they could, you know, still expand without having to do substantial retaining walls and those types of things, but give us a little bit of latitude to work with them. I think I'm getting the gist of what you're saying, that we don't necessarily, given the way that this lot is shaped, have to take that easement out, give them the full lot to work with, but also be respectful of the other houses in the area with their size as well. And if it still yields an exception request, then so be it, if not, even better. So I think that's something that we can do and work with our, in the short term.
That's good.
I have one more comment. It, I'm glad you got the geotechnical, you know, report and everything, because that hill is very, very, very unstable. And I think every... hill is very, very, very unstable, and I think everyone knows.
Right at the intersection of Taylor Boulevard, Menorca Way, and Camino Alto, Taylor Middle School is right across the street, here you have the map and location where it is, it's an existing two-story home with a first-floor lower level, consisting of an attached two-car garage, and then there's a second-floor main level, containing a side entry stairway to the covered porch, entryway connecting to a living room with fireplace and closet and kitchen open to a dining area. There were consultation forms sent out to both adjacent neighbors, the one neighbor located above the site came in to see the plans last Friday, and after seeing the plans, she mentioned some, some concern about potential view, like, side view, but after seeing the plan, she was okay with the plans, and was, said she would approve the plans. The other neighbor, certified mail receipt was sent to him, and there was no response received by staff. The existing home is a 2,504-square-foot home at 31 percent FAR, and they're proposing a 3,480-square-foot addition, which would bring it up to 52 percent FAR. They're requesting an exception on the second-floor west-side setback of zero feet, so, and that would be a distance of 7 feet 10 inches, and then on the second-floor east-side, zero feet, with a distance of 13 feet 7 inches, and of course, they would bring it up to the front, zero, front exception at 36 feet.
Sam?
Yes?
Can you put by how large the addition is that they're adding?
Uh, yes. So, the, the addition is, at, at, this is the site plan, so the addition, it's a, it's a horizontal addition in the front portion of the house, and, I'm going to talk about this. I think, I'll clarify it on the, on the site plan, or on the plans itself. This portion in the back here would be, would be a renovation, this is where the, the two-story addition would occur, right in the front, it's a large lot, triangular-shaped lot, and they would just be bringing it forward here. Trying to find the, the full-size view. This is the, it's lower level existing, and the lower level proposed, there would be some work in the back to create some additional space back here, livable space in the back. And then, the entryway would be switched from the side to the front, with the stairway connecting to the second floor. And this is the main, or the second-story level, and this is where the, the second-story level would be expanded here, so the expansion on the second floor is just expanding slightly the living room area. And then you have the entryway hallway here, and the staircase going to the second floor. These are the elevations, the proposed front, existing front elevation, and the proposed second-story, or second, proposed elevation, front elevation, existing south rear elevation, proposed south rear elevation. And this shows the west-right elevation, and the portion which would be added to the And this is the east elevation. These are the findings, the setback exception is being requested primarily to, to match the existing architectural design of the building, and the, they want to just expand the front and, and to build structurally on the existing walls, and that's the primary, primary reason they're doing that, and also to fit within the neighborhood, the other homes along the street, all are built with the same style, architectural style. Staff is recommending the plan commission review the project, and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a design review permit to allow a two-story addition to a single-family residence, and setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks of a single-family residence in the single-family residence zoning district. And I can pull up the, the plans to give you an idea of the... It's a bit hard to tell on the screen there, but it's, I believe it's, it's approximately like 800, 800 square feet addition, when you add both the bottom and the top square footage, this portion here. The applicants are here to answer questions also.
Any questions for him right now? No? No? Okay, would the applicant like to come up?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Chris Ruffat, I represent RDS, and I commend your stamina, and basically, the, this house, when we came on board, had prior fire damage, and also, it had a lot of extraneous vehicles parked in the front yard, and in the interior of the garage. It was very badly maintained, and quite an eyesore, and also, it had a side-loading entry area, which was, the number-one design criteria was to, to, in essence, create a more cohesive entryway, put it in the middle, allow the stairs to be in the front, and that's what led to the volume, basically, the two-volume stair area, and also, the, the large interior garage area was a prime source for a remodel and, and adding a bedroom on the, basically on the lower level, and then various remodeling areas, I believe it's 400 and some-odd square feet in the, in the main, and probably 250-ish on the, on the lower end. So, we wanted to keep with the same architectural style, and obviously, we wanted to expand the existing walls along the left-hand side, and that's why we're asking for the exception of the setbacks. And the homeowner is here to answer any additional questions, but that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question, please, and Sheet A2, where it talks about the exceptions requested.
Yes.
There's something on the left side that talks about a setback exception at the lower?
The, if we were not to have the exception, according to the way the zoning code reads, and, and working with Sam, is that the, the lower and upper walls would have to set back at least seven feet from that left front corner, if we were not to be, in essence, if we were not to not have the, the exception. So, in essence, that's why we're asking for the exception.
So, there's an additional exception that is being requested for the first floor?
Um, Sam is more adverse to the zoning code items, probably a lot more so than I am, so we basically followed his guidelines and his guidance on that request. So, if you have specifics about the code, he may be able to address it.
I, I can address that, that, that's actually, the setback exception is just for the second floor, so, anything above seven feet measured from grade, the second-floor setbacks are measured from the exterior wall below, they're not proposing any setback exception to the ground floor, it's, it's still going to be five feet away from the property line.
Yes, okay, so that's a, yes, that's a confusion.
I think there was just some confusing in the, in the, in the plan and, and the way it was detailed, but, but the, the exception request is a second-floor setback exception request, there's no request for exception on the ground floor.
Okay, thank you, because it had that on the plan, so that was a little confusing, and I was like, why? It says on the plan, A2.0, it says setback exception at lower, and so I, that was kind of a, I didn't know what that, why that was there, so, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Apologize for the confusion.
Oh, question for the architect.
Sorry.
So again, I posed the same question that we posed the previous owner, is that you are making this request for exception because what circumstance?
He just told us.
That's what you're suggesting.
Right. Just want to hear an explanation, so, to be fair to...
So, please, can you refrain, can you please ask me that question again?
From the second-story setback requirements inset, and what is your justification for requesting this variance to our code?
Number one would be in keeping with the surrounding neighborhoods, and being allowed what other homes in the neighborhood currently have, so, that would be probably criteria number one, number two would be in keeping with the existing house footprint, the garage, the two-car required garage poses a couple of, couple of design challenges, that is, the width of the garage door, the 20-foot required for the two cars, and then, we're left with a requirement for a stair access to the main level. The building would look very strange if we had to have a, a large garage, garage door, and a skinny little stair leading up to the main level, so architecturally, it makes sense to have a more cohesive elevation that allows for the, for the joining of the lower and the, in essence, the main floor, which technically is on the second floor, so, it makes for a better architectural piece, if you will, so, that would be our, that would be my, my suggestion to your question.
I have, when did you come on board on this project?
On the beginning.
Okay, because...
Yes.
We've looked at plans for this property more than...
I mean, I did see one, I did see one prior, so, yes, I was, I was privy to, to
Um, yeah.
Uh, one plan.
I personally don't have a, a problem granting this exception, because of the style of the house, it is right now, and this exception, the side setbacks was much more important previously, when we just didn't want to add a second story that was a box on top of a box, and so, we were trying to get a different design. However, in this particular situation, the squareness is there, and quite honestly, the squareness is kind of back, and so, you wouldn't want to shrink the top by five feet, it would just, the design would just not be in, in keeping with it, so, I, in this particular situation, I don't have any problem with the setbacks at all, I think the house looks quite nice.
Thank you.
And so, I, my other question is, though, I didn't realize it was set back 53 feet, so you're going to come forward how many feet, you're still going to have a 38 to 44?
Off the top of my head, if you, I don't know.
If you look at, through the chair, the Plan Sheet A2.0...
Yeah.
The addition portion will, will come forward, it's about 13, 13 feet 7 inches on the, looking on the, on the east elevation, and then, 7 feet 10 inches on the east elevation.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You're still going to be well into your minimum of 20 feet, so...
Yes.
But I forgot to mention, the, the uniqueness of this project is the fantastic landscaping that, that is being added to this project, extensive landscaping, Sheet L1.0, and there's also on Plan Sheet A7, 3D model of the proposed home, the landscaping has a variety of plants and shrubs, and, and both in the front and the side and the back of the home, which I think will be a definite improvement to the neighborhood compared to what, what's existing at the site.
Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions for the RDS?
I agree, the landscaping is amazing.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few questions, if you don't mind, you have a garage door that is custom-section rolled-up cedar, Western red?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, clear satin finish, and then you also have a row-valley door pattern, you know, with the front door, which is going to be some sort of a duckless fur material?
I believe so, yes, I don't have the color board in front of me, so, I'm a little bit on the, okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, and then you intend to use smooth stucco, pigmented, or is it painted? Looks like it...
It's going to be painted, no, the, no integral color, if that's what you're referring.
Right, no pigmented color, where you...
No.
Okay. Okay, you choose to use James Hardy, Hardy Plank lap siding in the front, as well as the, sort of a side elevation, because I'm looking at your Isometric A7?
Yes.
You have a proposed right-front ISO, where the siding wraps around, I don't have the orientation here.
Wraps around.
Right, and it stops at the... We should put it good at that.
Yes, and that, that was meant to be a point of interest, an accent, if you will, and the, the, the material selection was to utilize a material that's, that's maintenance-resistant, if you will.
Point of interest.
Did I, yes, did I answer your question?
Because that particular corner, especially the northwest corner...
Yes.
...property, it's going to get a lot of exposures there.
Right, and, you know, the, the house was a design challenge, and that, we, we wanted to add some, some, some areas of interest, but we didn't want to make it obstentatious, so, we felt that, or I, I felt that adding the, the siding in that key spot might give us a little bit of detail, but not too much.
Okay, I, I think I like the fact that it's siding, but I'm a little concerned about the choice of material, let me just confirm, the lap siding Hardy Plank you're talking about is the eight-and-a-quarter inch?
To the weather, yes, correct. The option, of course, is always a cedar, stained natural product, I don't think we have a problem with that either way, if, if, if the commission, commissioners wanted to opt for, for, for that, we'd be fine with it as well.
Yeah, it would look a lot better if it is a natural wood product, or you can even consider, I mean, if you choose to use siding for its ease of maintenance, right, which I can appreciate, I still wouldn't use the Hardy Plank lap siding, because that one, I... one, I tend to use them in the back or the side of the house where people cannot see.
Got it.
Yeah, it's just the quality of that product is just a different grade product.
Yes, it is.
It's designed to be sort of a blind spot in the rear, you know, it's not, so it would be better if you use, as far as the rolled-up door itself is concerned, is it going to be flat surface without any reveal?
That's correct.
Okay, so it would also serve you really well if you use some sort of a square edge butt joint with a minimal review on the top siding without any trims?
That'd be nice.
That'd be nice. It'll be a bit of a carpentry work for you to do that corner.
What about the, how would you suggest treating the corners? Trim or J, J mold or TX mold? What's your suggestion if you're, if we're going with siding?
Frankly, if I would have designed, if I were to design this, I would... If I may?
Go ahead.
Ouch, for a minute. I would do a natural miter cut corner.
Miter cut?
You know, put a four-by-four flash.
That'd be real clean.
Right? It's going to be a bit of a, you need a fine carpenter to do this, but it's going to look beautiful.
I think it'd look great, yes, actually.
Yeah, but if, once you trimmed it, it looks, yeah. So, and how much do you really like those roof brackets? On a contemporary-looking house with a roof bracket?
Yeah.
I don't understand your thinking process.
I'm okay with brackets. I've seen them a lot in, in, in projects, in commercial projects. I've used them before. I've used metal before. We wanted to soften it up a little bit by using the wood. So, I think I'm okay with the wood.
Okay, I'll let you slide on that one.
Thank you.
What's the chimney? When I look at your, your ISO, were they red bricks?
Existing, yes.
How did you intend to modify it?
The goal was to paint. To paint them.
Just paint right over it?
Yes, and obviously, it'd be, it'd be cleaned and sealed prior.
So you still get all that texture with the brick texture?
I think so.
All right. The roof, you choose to use the rolled-up membrane, curtantine, the black, you know, sort of a tile and gravel type-looking roof, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There's obviously a lot of choices for roofing nowadays. Maintenance-free would be ideal.
Have you considered using a cool roof, white?
There was some discussions about that. That could be an option. I don't, I don't think it's going to be cost prohibitive, so I think we'd be fine with that.
Yeah, the cost is, I mean, you're going to, you're going to earn that back in no time in terms of energy efficiency.
I mean, there, there may be some solar panels in the future. I don't want to broach that one, because I'm not familiar with the solar panel ordinance in Millbrae, so. But yes, a cool roof sounds good.
Yeah. Good. Oh, and I look, look at your ISO. You've got all these gutters in the front. Can you put them on a side?
Sure, sure, if they, right, I mean, if they work on the side, then that by all means, yes. Perhaps, maybe we can eliminate one if we can combine the, the facings here, the fascia gutter. This one here.
Great, thank you.
Put that around the side.
That's a bit of a design exercise.
Any other questions for him right now? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Does anybody out there want to speak on this project? No, okay. Public comment closed. Discussion? Comments?
Question for, question for staff, I guess. At what point, since the existing home hat doesn't meet the side setback requirements, it's, you know, pretty flush from top to bottom, when does it require a review by the planning commission for a side setback extension if it already doesn't have that side setback? And wouldn't this be case for pre-existing condition that it would be grandfathered in, or no?
No.
The, because it's an addition to the front, it's a new construction, and they're requesting an exception for the second floor to not meet the setbacks, it does require coming to planning commission. That's just in our code. When you, when you, there may be an existing non-conforming home that's built, but when you're adding anything new to it that requires an exception, we come to plan, it's required to come to planning commission.
Something for further future considerations, because if they do an addition, and then you actually do meet that side setback requirement, it would, might look really out of place with the, you know, it would look like a, you know, add-on rather than nicer remodel. But anyway, something for future discussion.
Like I had said a long time ago, we required the setback because we didn't want it to look like a box on top of a box. And, but styles have changed even, so, and that's why it's only an exception and it doesn't, it is not a variance, because it gave the planning commission some leeway. But you have to be careful, because in so many of the older homes, when they go to add-on, that are the one-car garage and little, it, it, it's still a good that we have that setback requirement. But I'm noticing in some of these homes, granting an exception on them makes more sense.
At the end of the day, our guidelines are there as a start, but every property's unique, and that's why we have these mechanisms to deal with them. So, that's why we have exceptions.
In general, I mean, when I look at the plan, I, I mean, I do see a huge box. I'm not a huge fan of it, and I think you recognize that as well, you know, by going through your design process. But the house itself, it's already a box, and trying to eliminate all these difficulties in trying to redesign the house and taking out all those structural elements would be difficult. I think you designed the house with budget in mind, given the amount of work that is required to do this, to bring this house back into life, really. And, and designing in such a way as, you know, like I said, with a certain budget in mind. I assume you're not changing the foundation with the rear portion of the house? You're leaving it as it is, right? Yeah, so, I think that, yeah, I think they designed it, you know, with a certain goal in mind, budget-wise. And so, but at the same time, they take advantage of the design options that are available to them and make it as nice as they can.
I think it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Even as they can, I think it's a nice-looking house.
Normally, I would rather see a box on the top that is a little smaller with a little setback, right? And create some sort of a roof, sort of a roof deck space, if you will, or balcony space would look beautiful. But there's a certain design constraint with this house, I can see it.
Yeah. I see it conforming to the neighborhood, and it's matching the existing home, so there's no setback on the existing second story. So, to put a setback on the front addition would look out of place. And then also, it looks like it's very nice, nicely done. It's an upgrade, and it meets the FAR, it meets the other requirements, so it's in conformance with the rest of the city code.
Anything else anybody wants to say?
No, I, I just agree, so I'm not going to, I agree, not just, I just agree, so I'm fine with it. I think it's, you know, with what the house was already. I think it's fine, and it'll look, it'll, it's about time for this house to be able to be redone and be usable, so, you know, I, I think that's a good thing, and I'm fine with the setback exceptions.
That being said, I pushed my button already.
No second, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the design review permit to allow a second, two-story addition to a single-family residence and the setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks of a single-family residence in a single-family residential zone area, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Any second?
One second there. Just applicant one more time. So, the, the northwest corner siding on the top, what would you use again? Would you use natural wood, or would you use Hardy with the butt joint? Just want to make sure we capture that.
Personally, I, I don't...
I'd go with natural.
Okay, natural wood.
I feel like if they want to do an upgrade, but I don't think that we need to, I don't know. For me, I don't, I don't feel like I have to put that in there.
I'm not sure you put it in there. I think you just want Sam to take a note.
Yeah, okay.
The note, next time they have a chat.
Yeah, so they can, they can do that, but I, I don't feel like it's needed to...
Making a condition of approval.
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure Commissioner Feng was trying to, so.
If you want a condition...
I was going to make that a condition, given what they like to put in, because I do believe that the use, the first choice of the, of the design, which is to use a lap siding, it's kind of not right material for that location. So, and then what they choose to use, which is a natural wood, would fit a lot better. It's going to come out beautiful.
So I will amend my motion?
Thank you.
To accept the amendment that is requested by Commissioner Feng.
Got you on video.
Your second still okay?
Sure, I'll keep my, I, I don't know, to a certain degree, I feel like at some point, we're making, you know, we can't choose everything for people, and we're making, whether we are okay with the project that they have designed. And so, I just want to be a little bit careful about redesigning for people and materials as long as it fits within the findings. But I'm all for a better project, and if they're happy with it, and, you know, I'm good with that.
Exactly, and it seemed like they saw the benefits of it.
Sure.
And so, I feel that we can put it in as a condition.
Okay, your vote?
Okay.
Yeah. Pass is 5-0. Congratulations, 10-day appeal. All right, one more.
My God, we might get...
You can do it. 316 Juanita, design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks of a single-family residence in the single-family residential zoning district.
I'm getting faster.
I'm getting faster.
I'm getting rummy.
So, just, just the highlights, Sam?
Okay. This is a project, a 316 Juanita Ave. It's a second-story addition of 820 square feet. They're requesting setback exception on both sides. Actually, the required setback is seven feet on the west elevation, and they're going to actually do four feet on the, on the east elevation, measured from the exterior wall below. The applicant is requesting to construct the second floor with a zero setback on both sides for a length of 30 feet, 5 inches on both sides of the addition to integrate the design with the existing building footprint, utilizing the existing load-bearing first-floor walls, and to balance the new roof design enassing with the first floor. All six adjacent neighbors submitted forms in support of the project. Staff would just like to mention, there's, they will be revising the staff report. There's an existing accessory dwelling unit on the lower floor, and the, the rooms will be edited in the staff report to, to address, to point out which rooms are the accessory dwelling unit and which are the rooms of the rest of the house. This EDU was approved under a separate permit. And I will just quickly go through the slides here. This is the existing FAR, 21%, 2,656 square feet. It'll go to 27% at 3,476 square feet. They have a, two parking spaces, one garage and one surface space. Right now, it's an existing non-conforming single-car garage, so they're in compliance with the, our parking recommendations. This is the location of the second-floor addition, in the boxed, highlighted boxed red box. And these are the existing floor plans, the new proposed floor plan. And this is the, yeah, this is, the hatched area is the renovation on the first floor, and then on, to the right, you'll see the new second floor located over here. This is the new second-floor addition. So, this actually shows the actual rooms here, and then overlaid over the, the existing home where it's going to fit, basically, where the addition will be. And this is the existing east elevation proposed, or, sorry, west elevation and the proposed west elevation. Existing east elevation, proposed new east elevation. And then we have the front elevation, existing and proposed. And these are the findings required, the setback exception findings. And staff is recommending approval of the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the required second-floor setback of a single-family residence in the single-family R1 zoning district. I'm available for questions, and it looks like we do have the applicant here.
Thank you. Questions for Sam right now?
Sam, can you go back to the profile views with the front facing front? So it looks like on the top left there, the front-facing view?
Yes.
That there is a, no second-story setback on the left side, but there's a second-story setback on the right side?
No, actually, the, the setback, the, the, this is toward the rear of the building, so it's, it's actually, the building footprint itself narrows back there. So this is not, this is actually the building in the front, the first level, but when you go to the back, it's easier to see here. So this is the garage. So what you're seeing there on the right side there is the garage on the first floor, and then the actual building itself narrows back here. There's sort of like a little courtyard on the side here, and then there's a deck here. And so, they're actually doing the second-floor addition right here, and they're following the, the first floor here and here, zero setback. So if we were to, if they were to comply with our setback requirements, they would have to set it back measured from this wall in, seven feet, and then measuring from this wall in. So it would make it a very narrow space that, that wouldn't really be workable.
Thank you for that explanation.
Well, they could also, they could make it longer. I mean, this is the kind of home that we always required the side setbacks. This is the design.
Right, the, the required west-side setback would be seven feet, and then on the east side, it would be four feet, because you have the reduction factor. So that, they would only have to step back four feet on this side, because they're at a greater distance from the property line over here. But here, they would have to come in seven feet. I mean, staff reviewed it and felt that, that it integrated sort of within, within the existing building, the design and the footprint, that it integrated well. And it sort of is similar to other homes along the street that don't have setbacks. There's other several homes that, that have sort of this split-level design with, with no second-floor setbacks. So this, this design seemed reasonable, and it, and it's, the addition is further back toward the rear of the, of the home. So the front will, will remain like similar in design and style.
So what were you, did you say you were going to do, you were going to get clarification for which bedrooms were going to be with what?
So that, there, there's an existing permit, building permit already for an accessory dwelling unit that includes this portion back here, there's a kitchen here, and it includes... There's a kitchen here, and it includes this area, so this bedroom, this bedroom. So, in the staff report, the way staff had explained it, we basically tallied up the existing bedrooms and then the proposed new bedrooms. But just to avoid confusion, the bedroom... These three bed... These two bedrooms here are part of the accessory dwelling unit. So, that's something that staff was just going to clarify in the staff report. And then the... And then identify the bedrooms that are part of the single-family home. So, there was just... It was just sort of the numbers looked funny, because staff counted the ADU rooms as part of the existing home, when they're really part of the ADU. So, that's the clarification. That's just a little revision that staff will do to make sure it's clear.
When was that permit issued for the ADU?
Let's see. I do not have the date. I believe it was last year. I can get that date for you. I believe it was about a year ago. I do have the permit number, but I don't have the exact date.
So, is there any correction on this FAR or the square footage on the summary table?
Not on this one. I'm not aware of any.
No, it's fine. No, it's good.
Huh?
Only the narrative in the staff report said there was one bedroom in the ADU. There's actually two. That's the typo in the staff report.
No, no, but the floor area ratio only is going to move...
Floor ratio should stay the same, whether it's ADU or the primary house. So, it's... The primary house is like 1,900-something, and the ADU is 700-something, and so it's 26 or whatever you see in there. So, it's correct in the staff report.
But then, this addition is going to bring it up to 34.
Right, but whatever's in the staff report, I'm just saying that's correct. It's not... It has nothing to do with ADU.
Yeah, it's fine.
But it's 27%.
A huge lot.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Sam right now? No? Okay, thank you. Applicant? Thank you. Thank you for waiting. I wish we had a prize or something. A plant, I don't know.
I'll just put the plans up. Thank you. Hi, I'm Yang Chen, the designer for this project. Actually, the ADU is designed by me, and also the second-floor design is come from the owner's demand. And they have... The kid is growing up and going to go to elementary school, high school, presumably, so they want the kids to have their own privacy room to live in there. That's why they propose to get a second-story addition, mainly for the parents, and the downstairs will leave the space for the kids. So, for the second-story additions, we need to set how the second story in the backside of the house, because on both sides of the labor, they have the second story mainly up on front area. So, when we set the second story on the backside, so we won't get too much intrude to the privacy of the labors, especially the windows in the backyard and something. So, this has come from this concept. Any questions?
Any other questions for him right now? No? So, what... So, the setback exceptions are not consistent with city code?
Yeah, the setback request basically is come from the housing structure and stabilize. Also, we have considered retrofit emphasis to the buildings when we have a second-story buildings. So, since the exterior wall, we checked the system foundation is pretty strong right now at the ground floor. And then if we have a setback, the second-floor loading we see in the middle of the house which when we have earthquake, something is not very good for the hold-down, to tear down, to transfer the loading to the foundation. That's why we request a setback on the exterior wall sitting on the existing foundation, and the hold-down can go from the second floor going down to the ground floor. That will be more stabilized and more earthquake resistance for the designs.
Come again. So, you're saying the reason for the setback exception is for structural integrity?
Actually, the structural integrity is the major considerations.
So, you're saying that you cannot design a house with the required structural integrity without violating the setback exception?
We can decide that, but this will take more works for engineering staff, and also more calculation and more consideration. Since the existing foundation is very healthy and strong enough to hold a two-story building, that's why we prefer, recommend that the design will sit on the existing footings.
Right, I understand it's easier to do a calculation and easier to do structural design if the wall goes straight up.
It's more safety for the people living inside the house.
I disagree about being more safe, but I understand it's easier to do calculation and design, right? But that's not the goal of the rule. Has it been any consideration of extending the second stories towards the back a little further? I mean, you only have two bedrooms and two bathrooms up there, two suites, basically.
Yes.
Right? And you have sort of an office, you know, sort of a communion, communal area on the top.
It's a hallway area type of stuff.
Right, that you name it as an office right here, next to the stairwell, with the big giant walk-in closet. Sam, how much setback are we required in order to not require an exception on the second floor?
So, on the east side, east elevation, east-side setback, the requirement is four feet. On the second-floor, west-side setback, the required setback is seven feet, measured from the exterior wall below. Setback.
Right and left, pretty much.
The east. When you say west, you really mean southwest, right?
Yes, it's the side where there's like a courtyard, where it's further away from the adjacent property owner, where there's like an open space area, where there's a couple of small decks there, on ground-floor decks. So, on that side, the setback is four feet.
The building, the left-hand side, is the southwest wall. Is that correct? Yes, it's...
When you face the building on the left-hand side, there's a zero setback.
Yeah.
And then on the right-hand side, the code required will be like four feet over there.
Which you did not meet? Oh, because of the first floor being already at a certain step, okay.
Basically, the second-story addition is, if you're looking for the hatched area on the first-floor plan, you see those are the existing buildings, exterior wall parameters over there. And then the rear side of one kitchen with two bedrooms, two baths, is the ADU. It's newly added on. We get a permit by 2018, around July.
Excuse me through the chair. It's midnight right now, so...
Do we think we can finish this in...
Like 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
It's 12 o'clock right now.
Midnight. Can we keep...
We can't stop now.
15 minutes.
Okay, is everybody else okay? Another 15 minutes, max?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I've been thinking around, and I don't realize it's midnight. Is there a chance I could just have one half to... One minute to say something?
Are you... Public comment?
About what?
About this project?
Someone related to ADU, I thought we'd, but then you guys mentioned ADU.
That's not our...
It's not. The ADU isn't on the...
For future...
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so 15 more minutes, let's keep it quick.
Let's try to...
If I can just throw in my comments, because I know you're... I'm sorry.
Okay, so do we have questions for him? Are we moving into discussion?
Oh, are we?
Are we good?
Oh, are we in questions, or are we...
Are you questioning him?
No.
Yeah, okay. So, let me finish. So, with regards to the southwest wall where you're asking for an exception, I mean, when I look at the facade of the building, I'm not too concerned about the southeast wall, but rather the southwest side, it looks a little off when I look at the facade of it, because, you know, the southeast side, you're being camouflaged by already the setback on the first floor. The setback... Wait, you're already being... The setback exception has been camouflaged by how wide the building is when you look at the front, but not the southwest side of it. Is it a possibility that you modify the design so that it doesn't require that setback on the southwest side of it, by pushing back the second-story addition?
Because the stair entrance, we need a room for the stair entrance. That's why we needed like a 12... Including the landing of the second floor, we needed that space. That's why we extend over there.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say is, yes, it will require a certain amount of design on your part, and maybe even engineering, but I do believe you can engineer a safe house with proper structural integrity, even though it's not built right on top of the exterior wall. Basically, what I'm trying to say is, that's not a reason for an exception, okay? Unless there's a certain amount of hardship, or at least from the appearance perspective, that when I look at the house, that it doesn't look like it is... What's the right word? It just, when I look at the facade of this, look at the front facade, it just looks off.
Yeah, because...
And it's not like you have a design constraint here.
This is because the frontage of the buildings, they have a garage, is attached to the living space over there. And then in the rear side, you can see the design of the original designs, all the living space in the one line over there. So, where were the second-story addition, basically follow up with the living space in the straight line. We are not altering this line. When you have a setback on the second floor, which means you make the living space a different shape on the second floor, is not really compromise with the existing housing designs. And right now, we have a roof, slope, everything will match with the existing designs.
Oh, okay, I'm not...
It is getting late, and we're all getting a little rummy, and I'm sorry, you've had to wait this long for your project, but I think it can be designed without the exceptions. There is no reason to grant an exception on this type of a design. So, I... You've done a great job adding the ADU. I'm sure you could do this just as easily.
I think on this house...
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I just... What you had said earlier in the evening is granting an exception is... I mean, we got to think about this. Why are we doing it? And I think in this particular case, it could be built very well without granting the exception.
I'm not comfortable with, by saying this is designed very well, because when you try to go with the exist... We try to make additions, not clearly see this is something altered in the history, from the history. That's why we want to maintain the same perimeter of the building and raise it up and get those kind of designs. So, this is one kind of architecture theory when we started in the school.
But this is the kind of building, why we did create the exceptions and the setbacks.
But if you're looking for the labors, the labor have the same situation. They don't have a setback for their second story.
Who?
Pardon me for one second.
Both sides of the labor, they have the same second-story sections.
Well, some of them were built before we came up with this. This is...
Okay, excuse me for one second. This is sounding more like discussion?
Yes.
And I technically need to say, is there anybody in the room who needs to make a public comment?
I don't know. I guess I thought we were there.
No, we weren't there yet. He's still standing there. So, no public comment? Okay, it's closed. Okay, now we can discuss. I think we know how you feel and you feel.
Yes, you know how...
I'm going to tell you that I don't agree. I think, when I look at the house from the front, I think it looks attractive. I don't think it's a box on top of a box. There's several neighbors who have the exact same kind of design with no setback on the I don't have any problems with it.
Thank you.
I know that we're not supposed to hand out exceptions willy-nilly, and I don't think this is willy-nilly. I think that there's nothing wrong with the look at the house. If the spirit of those setbacks is either to make the design look better and perhaps be concerned with privacy toward the neighbors, I think neither one of those is being violated at this point, so I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. But that's me. We got two more.
I see that the, looking from the front, north front, on the right side, looking at the house, with the garage side, it does look like, it has the appearance that it has a setback from the roof line, that's because the garage ends, and then the second-story is in line with the left side of the garage. So, it almost does appear to generate the appearance of a setback, and it probably, you know, meets those functionality and the design of a setback to allow light for the neighbors and setback from the neighboring house. The issue is the, that there is no setback on the left side facing the front, and so it looks non-conformant with our city code. So, I have an issue with that. I have another issue, though, also that, you know, granted, this is a large lot size, and the FAR allows to build quite amount of floor space and livable area on this. It's going from a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath, to a seven-bedroom, six-and-a-half-bath, and it has one garage space there. So, isn't there... Question for city staff? Isn't there... What's the requirement for garage and parking for this size of a house? Wouldn't the number of bedrooms, I think I've asked this before, I thought the trigger... It's not based on bedrooms?
Through the chair, the requirement for the... They are meeting the requirement. They have a two... Let's see. The wrong project. It's one... They have one existing non-conforming space, and then they have space for a second parking space in the driveway. The requirement for additional parking is if it's greater than 3,500 square feet of livable space, not including the garage, and they're below that. So, the requirement is two parking spaces. They have an existing non-conforming single-car garage, and then they have space for the other parking on the driveway.
So, with a seven-bedroom, six-and-a-half-bath house...
Yeah, it does... It's not calculated by bedrooms, but it's calculated by habitable square footage, habitable space.
Okay, so it meets code, although it seems there's a lack of parking.
We got to get the ADU done.
Okay, as other people have said, I have no problem with the one-side exception that's in back of the garage, because the garage juts out, so it looks enough like it's kind of a setback. The other side, I don't feel inclined to just be okay with it, because, you know, there are the rules for a reason. The design guidelines were, we didn't want a box on a box, and I'm assuming that we, you know, I mean, we've had plenty of houses that are structurally sound that have had the setbacks. That's... If it wasn't sound, then we wouldn't have put that in place. So, I just... I don't think that... I'm not inclined to be okay with that setback exception on the second floor. I might be okay with, like I said, with the side on the east side, which is close to the... Northeast, which is close to the garage, on the garage side, behind the garage. But the other one, I'm not.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with the northeast side, because it does look like a setback from the front when you view it, but not the southwest side. I'm sorry. And I believe, you know, I haven't gotten... I haven't heard a hardship where this should be granted, and structural integrity is not a good reason.
Do we have a motion?
Continue it.
Continue it, perhaps? Mm-hmm. Oh.
I guess I beat you to it.
Okay.
But let's see what I motioned before you second it, shall we?
I know. I... I was thinking and then I didn't really mean to push it and then all of a sudden I looked up and there were.
I motion to continue this project for further redesign in order to perhaps get rid of the southwest side of the exception on the second story setback. So I motion to continue the design review permit to allow a second story addition to a single-family home residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor setback of a single-family home residence in a single-family R1 zoning district for property 316 Juanita Avenue.
Votes, please.
Are we voting?
Yes, please vote. Votes 5-0, we continue to a future date, we'll see you again sometime soon.
Thank you.
I do have a question, though, of staff, staff. So, in order to avoid re-noticing, if we continue this to a date certain, and if for some reason it's not quite ready, we could, you know, extend it, but I would recommend to a date certain so that it would eliminate a lot of extra.
Not in this case, because they need to redesign it and the setback exception would have to be different next time around.
Oh, so with the difference, yes, sorry.
This one wouldn't matter.
It won't.
So we're only looking for, need on the east-west, east-south side?
I'd like it on both sides, but I can't get support for that, so one side is better than none.
If you could do both sides, maybe, but yeah.
But both sides, the second story will be related to more.
So we might be okay with the one side.
Yeah, I mean, if you setback also the northeast side, it will look really off the center, so that may not be a good thing. I think we'd like to see a symmetrical design where the first floor is a certain footprint, the second floor you setback from either side and you have a smaller second story, so it looks more appealing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. There's no new business, right? No. And there's no staff updates right now? And commissioners don't have any comments? They do have a comment, okay?
I do have a comment, very strong comment.
Okay.
Because we've granted an ADU and we have no ordinance or nothing done for ADUs. And I feel very uncomfortable because we should have something in place for ADUs as I guess you are approving. And you know what, in this particular case, there should have been some adjustment with everything that's there with extra parking, like an extra garage or something.
Tonight's, we can't discuss like ADUs now? No, we're not gonna discuss, no, okay.
No, we're not gonna discuss it. What I'm saying is, as we are approving these, we have nothing in place and it's disappointing and I know we've been really, really busy, you have been really, really busy, but I really think that should definitely.
Through the chair, we are following the accessory dwelling guidelines, the state guidelines. So we do have something in place, we have regulations for an attached ADU, a detached ADU and a junior ADU. They all must, in addition to meeting the state guidelines, meet the R1 Single Family Residential Development Standard Guidelines for lot coverage and FAR coverage. So they are allowed only lots with a single-family home. And we do, we do have that in place, but we, you're correct, we are, we need to work on our local ordinance, to adopt our local ordinance to meet the unique needs of Millbrae and so that's true, yes.
I mean, Gina keeps saying we're unique, we're different, and we're letting people do it based on state guidelines instead of our guidelines.
Just to throw a little bit of comment in there, I do agree that we should have an ordinance in place as quickly as possible. It is imperative that, you know, we have our own guidelines so that we can guide these ADU development in a, in a way that fits our city. But on the other hand, you know, one thing about parking with ADU, the design of that ordinance from the state level for the ADU is for ease of development and so that from within existing, a single-family home or multifamily home district, these ADUs should be created in a relatively easy fashion and quick approval to ease the housing crisis that we have throughout the statewide. So, and also at the same time, it is the expectation that these ADUs are small enough that they would occupy maybe one or two people and be affordable. So not having extra parking as sort of a, sort of a, what's the right word? Being a baggage to have these things, to have these things approved in an expedited fashion is by design. But I do agree that we should have an ordinance and if we feel strongly that, you know, parking should come with an ADU unit, then we should have that discussion. Personally, you know, based on my understanding that the state designed these guidelines for ADUs is for easy and quick approval to ease our housing crisis.
Okay. Anything else? Announcements?
One thing, sorry. Judging by some of the things that we have heard tonight, especially one of our residents, you know, going through the frustration of going through the whole planning process, one thing that I think we should all pay attention to is how these plans get checked and be extremely mindful about these things because if some of this basic number is not being checked properly and it kicks, you know, it gets all the way to the commission and we kick it back, that's how I see the frustration from the residents and the applicant. So these things should be avoided to the extent possible. So I just wanna make sure that we all understand, we're on the same page on that.
Yeah, thanks, and I did wanna just mention one thing on that, we recognize that as well and so I understand in the past there had been a number of efforts to try to standardize as much information that comes available to the commission. One thing we're starting to look at too is creating almost like a template form for the actual architectural plans themselves so that each page has consistency in the data. And so bear with us, we understand and it's very important to get all that numbers, all the numbers in the plans accurate and we will keep working our best to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for staying so late. We're adjourned.